All right, I'd like to call the Regular Board of Education meeting in order on March 25th. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge legally to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to add and write to the agenda for clerk pro temp.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, six nothing. The motion is, the board would like to approve Anne Marie Cortoroni to be the clerk pro temp in absence of Kelly Apology.
Second.
Question's on her way.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, six nothing. Anne Marie, would you please do a roll call?
Sure. Ms. Letterbid?
Here.
Mr. Case Liao?
Delayed.
Ms. Flynn?
Delayed.
She just texted she's on her way.
Mr. Rotowski?
Here.
Ms. Stadler?
Here.
Mr. Zhang?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Ms. Hewer?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Fire exits, Matt?
Exit sir in the back of the LGI.
I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals and to seek legal advice from the school attorney, state law attorney, client privilege.
Second. Or most sub moved.
Meredith, second. Flora? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, seven zero. The board is expected to return an hour from now. We have two workshops tonight. The first workshop is the Personal Services Budget Presentation by Dr. Caddell.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about the work they're doing and the Global Personnel Department as well as our future goals and projects ahead of us. So we wanted to start off, Julissa and I have been working with the department, working on accomplishments throughout this past year, and so we wanted to highlight some of the things that we felt that we've made some great strides in. We've aligned current practices with state accountability requirements such as looking at increasing teachers' accessibility to educational assessment training, especially when it comes to annual reviews and making it into a multi-disciplinary assessment. Continued professional development for effective IEPs. This is our third year looking at IEP quality assurance with working with our staff on measurable goals, present levels of performance, and post-secondary transition planning that came out of our Indicator 13 to work from last year. We designed and implemented a student-directed IEP process which we started last year and we're continuing that this year. So far, I've been able to sit in on some fourth grade students presenting at their CSE meetings for the last five to 10 minutes, and in a couple weeks I'll be sitting in on the fifth grade students. Development of a comprehensive guidance document. Julissa and I have been working really hard on making sure that we have guidance documents that have common language and practices that are available for all students and for teachers to access. So our functional behavior assessment and behavior intervention plans, we have a guidance document for that. We update our annual annual review guidance document with all the required forms. We realigned our APPR for our related service providers, and we worked on the suppression and restraint of Board of Ed policy guidance and resources. We streamlined our PPS procedures digitally, so we're using the Google Team Drives, and all of our special ed teachers have access to that as well as our administrators. I've worked on realigning the McKinney-Vento procedures for state compliance since I am the McKinney-Vento liaison for the district. Created a systematic approach to determining students' level of support for related services. We both continue to have a presence in each of our six buildings every week. We initiated collaboration process with the county preschools to support students transitioning to kindergarten via CPSC to CSE. Meredith Millen, who is our CPSC chairperson, has really been working on establishing this collaboration process. We initiated an articulated process with staff for students transitioning from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grade. This is our second year in working with our staff so that we have a seamless transition from these major grade levels so that we have IEPs that are comprehensive and fit the needs of the students in those secondary programs. Areas of needs, these are things that we would like to see future support in. Professional development for our integrated co-taught teams. We'd like to see some professional development for our special area teachers when we are working with a variety of different learning and behavioral needs of our students. We'd like to enhance our school-to-work students in our specialized program, add mental health support at Beacon High School, and consider looking at replacing our contracted physical therapists with our own. In our three-year plan, I'd like us to be able to start considering alternative programs to support our middle school, high school students not ready to enter the high school. Look at a behavior specialist for the district. Look at specialized programs within the district for students with academic skills but emotional behavioral needs. Right now, we do have a contract with Anderson which has been useful and very helpful, but having a behavior specialist onboard in the district would help us on the spot situations when we need student supports within the classroom before considering out-of-district placements. These are the programs that we are establishing for the 1920 school year. So we will have integrated co-taught classrooms from pre-K to 12th grade. We will have resource room throughout all the grade levels, consultant teacher, direct and indirect. Special class from the K5 at a 12 one-to-one model. Special class at the sixth to 12th grade at a 15 and one model. Our MAPS class are five-year-olds to our 12-year-olds, and that is a six-one-one ratio. Our staff class at the high school for ninth graders is at eight-one-one. Our ADL program at the middle school is an eight-one-two, and we're looking at 12 years to 16 years of age. And our ADL program at the high school are for students from 16 years to 21, and all of the related services between speech, PT, OT, and counseling, K through 12. And district students with disabilities, pre-K through 12. So I wanted to break down the total number of enrollments of students that we have in the district, the number of CSE cases that we have at each of the building levels, and the total number of 504s that we have at each of the building levels. We have initial referrals and 504s combined, which tells you how many that we've received so far this year, and our program searches. Right now, we have 25 students on program searches. Have a majority of them in place, but we still have a small group of students that we are providing home instruction pending a program search. We also have 85 students that are under our preschool with disabilities. And then, students served in the district.
Can you put back one slide, any question? So, what is a program search?
So those are students who we've tried to maintain in programs here within the district, and they may need a more therapeutic setting. So, right now, we put them on program searches. Oftentimes, they remain in program in one of our district days until we send packets out to our local BOSIs or other out-of-district placements to determine if they have a program that meets the student. Sometimes, some students, as a result of a manifestation determination, are on instruction before we find a program for them. So we have to provide home instruction as well as their related services before they go out to a program that is a more suitable placement for them.
So does this include, or any of these numbers include the number of students that are on external programs versus internally?
We have.
If I'm saying that right.
Well, I do, I think I believe I have that on another slide, but right now, we have 25 students that we could do program searches. Seven are still pending placements out of the 25.
Thank you.
Some of those students, a small amount, are already in our out-of-district placements and are looking for a different placement because those programs are feeling that they can't manage the students' needs. Under IDEA, we have 13 classifying conditions that we can consider for students. In our district, I took the number of students that have the following classifications, broke it down for you to see that the majority of our students with classifications have learning disabilities on our IEPs. We have one student visually impaired, one student, two students orthopedically impaired. So I wanted to show the bar graph regarding the variety of disabilities that fall under IDEA. These are our out-of-district tuition costs, and these are your out-of-district placements. So abilities first. Right now, we have 14 students. Four of those students require private nurses, and we're considering one student to bring back to district. Our residential program at Anderson, we have two students. At Deveraux, we have two students, one of them in a residential placement. At Green Chimneys, we have three students, two of them in a residential placement. At the Kaplan Career Center, we have two students. At New York School for the Deaf, we have one student. Center for Respective Services, I apologize, I did not put the number, but we have two students. Colonel Hayes, we have one. Center for Discovery, we have one. Westchester Exceptional, we have one. And we have other means, we have two other student placements just recently occurring. We were able to place a student down in New York Town School District.
So that's the, so that's the number, I guess I was asking, right? Thirty-six?
So these are not the kids in program searches, these are kids that are already placed in our out-of-district programs. In addition to the out-of-district programs, we also have our BOSIs programs. So for our Dutchess County BOSIs, we have 18 students. We also contracted Dutchess BOSIs to provide us itinerant services for students inside the district. For an example, if we have a student who requires a teacher of the visually impaired, teacher of the deaf services, augmentative communication devices evaluation, so we contract with our local BOSIs to help us with those evaluations. Our Orange Ulster BOSIs program, right now, we have three students, and we have 14 students enrolled in a Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIs. So, right now, our contractual expenses cover our school-to-work, they cover.
You're clicking your mouse pretty loudly.
Is everything okay?
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
I was wondering where it was coming from. Wonder where the noise went.
My mic finally figured it out.
Great, I can bypass expenses. Good timing. We do have expenses that are covered in the 611 grant, and some of our staff salaries are part of that, and our BOSIs are itinerant services. So let me talk to you about Medicaid. When I first came into the position, Medicaid was a whole new area that we needed to learn and come up with systems that we can actually utilize Medicaid to the best possible capabilities within the department. So, I entered in the, where we see the lowest line, and through work with Anne Marie, we were able to hire a secretary that is really focused in on making sure that we're doing all of our claims payable to Medicaid. In the very short period of time that we've had her, she's doing a remarkable job, and we are actually seeing the benefits of having that additional person to support the Medicaid revenue that we're claiming. And the last slide, the last bar is from March 13th, so we continue to receive revenue from our Medicaid. Was that, was that something that just hadn't been accessed prior, or was it a change in Medicaid policy that made services eligible for reimbursement? Both. So our local RIC, who used to be our Medicaid group liaison, they lost the bid. So they. I'm sorry, local what? The RIC would be our person that we would contact, and they would help the local districts. But they lost the bid a couple years ago. So there are now people that we can call upon to help us with the Medicaid, so we had to, a lot of districts had to figure how to do the Medicaid. So we purchased Medicaid Plus through the frontline IEP. We hired an account clerk to help us really look at the Medicaid and the staff forms and setting processes and procedures so that all of our related service staff who can claim Medicaid are doing it with fidelity as well. Our summer staffing needs. Again, we'd like to offer professional development for our integrated co-taught classrooms. McKinney-Vento verification process, we started this last year. Having social workers come in for 10 hours in the summer to start the verification in July and August so that when the students do come to school, we do not have any issues with validation for transportation and for food services. Extended school year support, this is for our students in our specialized program that we offer the six weeks of support. So we do require a special ed teacher, speech, OT, social worker, and a teaching assistant, and a summer administrator. Summer CPSC and CSE meetings that we have to run for July and August. And then, summer tutors in the event that we have to provide compensatory instruction for medical-based needs on the secondary level. We have that in there as a possibility if we have a student or students that require that additional support. And that's it.
I have a question. So when you, when you say needs and above, you talked about the, looking for a replacement for the physical therapist and mental health support and everything, is that?
Right now, we contract out for our physical therapist. We have our own occupational therapist that we've hired in the district. Other districts do contract out occupational therapists, social workers. Right now, the only contracted service we have is with a physical therapist. And as we sit down and look at how much we're paying for the contracted out, we feel that we could use that salary for somebody that we could have in-house, that we could be part of the team and start looking at the initiatives that we've been working on, and so that they're part of all of that development as well.
And we, we'll address the mental health support in the, in the next presentation too.
Anthony, did you have a question?
Yeah, so this budget proposal compared to, for next year compared to your budget now, is it going up, is it flat, is it going down?
The out-of-district costs and the BOSIs costs are going up, not significantly, but they have an increase in costs, and we just did a huge comparison of what currently is going on versus what we expect for la, for next year. Contractual as well, we were, that's why Don mentioned the physical therapist, because we were looking at all the contractual services. We found that to be extremely high, and we've started the conversation with the teachers' union to see if we can add that position into the teacher's contract like the occupational therapist. So that's a part, it's a civil service position, so we have to create it and post it. So more, more about that as we go on, but we're just starting that. We added, sorry, did that answer your question, Anthony?
Kind of. I mean, are they, besides, besides the, the cost from vendors going up or other schools outside of us, what about our own expenses, are they going to go up besides the contractual labor increases?
I mean, the materials and supplies costs are going to remain the same, you know, the most significant expenditures in special ed are the out-of-district placements, the contractual services.
And the additional, the additional, sorry, the social worker at the high school would be an additional staff person.
No more.
We're wondering, are the out-of-district costs, aren't they reimbursable, or do we get reimbursed?
They are reimbursable, but they are reimbursable the following year, similar to BOSIs. So if we do spend more, we will get more in our revenue package the following year, but we have to budget for the full expenditure in the current year. So that's why you see the increase.
That's fine, but the, but the things that are going up are the current staff, and then the increases related to current staff or addition of staff, basically, right?
Right.
That's direct cost to the district.
Right, that's correct. One of the practices that Julissa and I have been doing is looking at the attendance of our students in the out-of-district placements. So if there is attendance issues and students are not accessing, we've been holding meetings, figuring out why is, why are they not attending the program? Is there another program that'd be more suitable? Where is their decision, especially if they're 18? What do they want to do? If they want to go for a GED, we've been trying to help them out that way. So really just having a pulse on overall attendance. Julissa?
Do you need to make an investment in any assistive technologies?
A lot of our students and the abilities for our medically fragile students do have forms of assistive technology where we've had to purchase iPads. A lot of the students already have them, and so if we are doing anything, it's updating the programming needs for them. There are some students that after through the interim review process require augmented communication evaluations, and oftentimes, those come out with a result of more technology to help them with their programming needs and communication needs. But a lot of that happens in our specialized programs outside the district.
So we're not, I mean, we are, we are meeting the needs with assistive technology, we don't need a frozen, you know, as, as the needs come up, we are buying them, right?
Correct. And we budget appropriately for that.
All right, thank you.
Last year, we added a part-time OT physician, and I just wanted to find out.
OT.
What's that?
OT.
OT, yeah. I just wanted to find out, an update on, has that been sufficient support for the needs of the students, and, because I don't see any expansion of that.
Right now, that's been working out to the point that we're able to provide the additional supports for students and not filling in with compensatory services because students are not being accessed. We're also working on a pilot program with a little smaller board and Mr. Wright and myself, looking at strategies to help students, all students in kindergarten, first grade on writing, pre-writing skills, so that we could, in the future, look at reducing maybe the number of referrals that are going out, we could provide more supports in the classroom. Thank you.
When you talk about the potential alternative program for students that aren't ready for high school, what, can you just describe?
Well, the high school right now has a staff program for ninth grade students, and that's a 18-2. So we're looking at that overall between myself and the team at the high school about the profile of students who need that additional support. Are there any other supports that we could have with the cohort of students that just need that transitional year of being successful when they come to the high school so that they can activate the education and get the credits they need to have? So we're just, we're looking over data and looking at the needs.
Thanks very much, John.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Our next presentation, presenter will be Mr. Wright with Dr. Landau. Oh, and Ms. Soto too, sorry, Ms. Soto.
Okay, we, we're doing a team approach tonight. We are going to be talking about some three-year planning for instructional, the instructional and professional development side of the budget. And so just briefly, we've been through this before, but my goal, or our goal with this was to put proposals in front of you that we think really reflect the work of the strategic planning process. So just to talk about where our plan came from, this slide is just stolen straight from our consultant, talking about the, the workplace world in 2030, and the highest growth skill needs in this study that was done are higher cognitive, creativity, and problem-solving, social-emotional leadership, and managing others, and then the highest growth skill for, for people in the workplace is technological. And so that, along with some other things, this had a big impact on our thinking too. Survey of principals across the country, the student mental health issues is the number one issue in schools in our country today, and also just the diversity of our district and opportunity gaps in our district, and students not accessing all the opportunities that we have, were things that we tried to address with this three-year plan. So, takes us to our strategic plan, I'm just going to go over this really fast. We have our mission statement. We have our belief statements. Diversity of our communities is our strength, an equitable education for all. And then, this idea of a culture of care in the district that ensures the wellness of the entire school community. We think that culture of care part specifically is a really great umbrella for all of those belief statements, and we think is reflective in what we're going to be putting in front of you. These are our skills and abilities that we want our graduates to have when they leave us. Communication, problem-solving, creative critical thinking, collaboration, and independence, and digital literacy. And then, our attributes and dispositions, we also want our graduates to be just with empathy, self-regulation, citizenship, community, curiosity, wonder, awe, imagination, and adaptability and flexibility. So, what we're going to do is we are going to walk you through some slides. For each year, we're going to talk about programming, staffing, and professional development. A lot of the programming changes that we're proposing are at Beacon High School, which, with some of them would then go down to Ramout in future years. And so to go through this, we have Eric Wright and Elisa Soto, and they're going to walk us through this proposal we have. Thank you, Dr. Landau.
Good evening, Board of Education. I would just like to say that, number one, I'm super excited about the opportunity to present a three-year plan. This is the first time that we've done so since I've been in this office, and I'm excited as well because I know that a lot of the funding that we're going to afford over the next few years will be towards professional development. So, a couple of weeks ago, I read a quote. I mean, I was watching YouTube, of all places, and I saw a video, and it was a quote that resonated, you know, with me from the video. It was from Sonia de la France, and it was a video from back in 2011, and the title of it was "Teaching in the 21st Century." And the quote was, "If teachers can only provide research, theories, information, content, facts, dates, formulas, then it's our role in the lives of students obsolete." That resonated with me a lot because when we think about what Dr. Landau just talked about from our strategic plan, things are changing, the world is changing, and that was back in 2011, but we have to make sure that we are really, really looking at the needs of our students moving forward to prepare them for life. So I think that the plan that we are putting forth for these next few years hooks, puts us in the right track. So at Beacon High School for the 2019-20 school year, we worked with Ms. Soto to think about what it is that we need to put in place that's different for our students. So we're looking at a business education program. And in the future, in the 2021 school year, we would be planning for an internship model. I think that's super important because we have many businesses and organizations that are right here in our community who could lend their hand and look at, you know, help to be our students for the future. Project Lead Away, that's an organization that we've been looking at for the last few years, and we see that there's a way to bring in computer science to our, to our high school. And as Dr. Landau said, in years to come, we will take it down to our, we'll move it down to our middle school, and hopefully to our elementary schools as well. We'll start off next year with the computers, computer science essentials course, which is pretty much an introductory course, you know, for our students. In addition, originally, I think you remember last year, Cecilia talked about a man. In addition, um, originally, I think you remember last year, Cecilia talked about a Mandarin course that we were going to, that we were looking forward to implementing this year, uh, through the Title IV competitive grant. Unfortunately, we weren't able to find, uh, a license, or hire, I should say, a licensed, uh, Mandarin teacher. So moving forward into next year, what we thought is that maybe we should offer Italian. The beauty of it all is that we have a teacher that is duly certified that Ms. Soto hired this school year. So we can, uh, we could introduce a Italian without, you know, any additional course.
And was that the, um, question on that one? I know there was a lot of discussion last year about the, the cost to develop the curriculum, right? So was that, were we able to cover that, switching to Italian?
Yes, we have curriculum planning over summer.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
If, um, since we couldn't find a licensed teacher for Mandarin, um, and we're with Italian this year, are we, does that mean we're going to stay with Italian for X amount of years? Are we going to look at a third language maybe in the future or what are you thinking behind that?
As it stands now, we'll probably be with two languages, Spanish and Italian for the next few years. We are looking at a plan to maybe see if we can possibly move it down to our middle school as well.
So the Italian is going to start at the high school?
But it'll start at the high school, yes.
Elisa's going to go and get a little bit more in depth with some of these things too.
So next week, we're looking at some art course work to, uh, and, uh, sorry, Monsieur, you don't, we didn't bring that to the curriculum committee yet, but I'm sure you're excited to hear that. We're looking at an architecture design course, interior design and sculpture course. The new course proposals will be coming at our next meeting. That's why I postponed our actually, I wanted to have that information.
I have one question on that. Be good to think about what kind of, um, facilities development or changes that you need in order to support, especially if, if you have the sculpture, if you're even the casting or while, and things like that. The bronze would be really fantastic, so keep those in mind about adding to the facilities list.
Thank you.
Also, just for those courses, is that something that the, they were brought to you by teachers? Or is it something that, so it's something that's coming from, sort of coming up from the ground up?
Teachers and students.
Teachers and students.
And I should have pref- prefaced this whole, uh, this thought by saying that, you know, everything that's coming forward has been from conversations with students, teachers, and then also through our strategic planning. So for my English department, there are three courses that we're looking to implement next year. They've already gone through the new course proposal, uh, uh, and also embedded in our curriculum, at our curriculum meetings. AP Language and Composition, uh, which will add a second, that means that we'll have a second AP course in our English department. Magical Realism and Literature and then Media Literacy. Those three courses, um, seem like they would be super exciting. They'll give kids the opportunity to, uh, to, to, to really get to, uh, to, to learn, to learn by way of, uh, uh, using close reading and other strategies that, that will enhance their writing. You know, so I think that's super important. In our science department, we will have a Research Literacy course. And that course will be a prerequisite for our research program that will begin in two thousand, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. So the Research Literacy course, um, will start at ninth grade. We'll be looking for ninth graders and then ten through twelve, ten through twelve grade, they'll have the opportunity to, um, possibly be in our, uh, in our research course.
Which is, that's also an internship program, correct?
Yes, and we'll talk about that a little bit more.
So I'd like to thank Members of the Board of Education and Dr. Landau and his executive team for the opportunity to propose several courses, programs and personnel that are needed in the high school. So as, um, Mr. Wright said, uh, we are introducing, we're hoping to introduce a new language, Italian. Uh, he did say that, um, we had difficulty finding a Chinese Mandarin teacher. I've spoken to several teachers, very intelligent, passionate about teaching Chinese Mandarin. They just do not have the New York State credentials to teach a New York State school. So giving options to our students is a goal of ours. And so we had the opportunity to introduce Italian because one of our teachers is dual-certified. Um, she has a robust resume, um, that she went to school in Italy, she worked in Italy, she was a translator for the Olympics back in two thousand and six. And these are experiences that she can share with our students. As Mr. Wright said, AP Language and Composition course is actually for our eleventh graders. Our eleventh graders do not have AP or TCC opportunities and we wanted to give them, um, that option. The Magical Realism and Literature, uh, what's interesting about that course is that it's a combination of American Indian literature, African-American literature and Spanish literature and Canadian studies, which is really exciting for our students. And then the Media Literacy, um, our students will learn how to do Youtubes or, um, blogs. This is how they're thinking, this is how they're wired, and this is what this course is all about, which is pretty exciting. In addition, you know, we are delighted to inform you all that our teachers who want to share their passion for literature and provide a variety of electives for our students. The Art Elective, um, this is really exciting. And you're going to hear me say really exciting, you know, at times, I am really excited about all these courses. Um, the, one of the Art Electives, which was the sculpture, um, that we talked about, that's actually a DIA Level Two course, okay? It's a contemporary arts concept course. We are trying to develop a partnership with Duchess Community College, who has a partnership with Vassar College. And the students can earn up to six college credits with the DIA course. If we cannot develop a partnership with them, SUNY New Paltz has agreed to take on our students. So they will earn college credit with this DIA course. We also like to introduce Interior Design. We know that's, that's a hot market right now for these, um, interior designers and architectural design, all of which fall under the STEAM initiative, which is really exciting.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Anthony, answer.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, I mean, I like the architectural design on there. It's, uh, I think, uh, it's a mix of science and art. It kind of, uh, it leads me into the question I have with this, what about, um, additional clients in math and engineering electives? Are we, um, what are we doing about those?
So that's actually my next slide, sir. It's Project Lead the Way, okay? So like, I'd like to propose a Project Lead the Way Computer Science Program, which empowers students grades nine through twelve to become creators instead of merely consumers of the technology all around them. The program's interdisciplinary courses engage students in real-world challenges. Not just how to code, uh, but to become better thinkers and communicators. Students take courses and demand knowledge and skills that they would use in high school and for the rest of their lives and on any career path that they take. So we are introducing a Computer Essentials course. It is a year-long course that provides our excellent entry point for our students to begin the Project Lead the Way Science Experiment. In Computer Essentials, students, we use visual block-based programming and seamlessly transition to text-based programming with languages such as Python to create apps and develop websites and learn how to make computers work together to put their design into practice. So the Project Lead the Way Computer Science course is also a college AP, um, program and New York State Computer Science and Math Pathway. So, um, in order to complete the sequence college, excuse me, um, Project Lead the Way is a fourth course sequence. This is an entry-level course. The second course is a Computer Science Principal AP credited course. The third course is a Computer Science AP CSA Framework Computer, um, course. Both courses, students can earn science and math credits. There is a fourth course, which is really exciting, and that's the Cyber Security course. Currently, there's a beta version, um, of that course and the full course will be released twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But our students are not eligible to take these courses until they take this entry-level Computer Science course.
Is that a nice, is that a ninth grade course then or?
It can be, if it's in their schedule.
So, Ms. Soto, before you go on, can I just ask about, with these opportunities, how much are we going to be adding on additional staff?
So we, we do not need to add staff. One of our math teachers will be trained. So it's a matter of playing around with the master's schedule we would take away. She currently teaches a Computer Science Intro course. So instead of teaching that course, she will be teaching the Computer Science Entry Level. So we do not do additional staffing.
So the second question is, is the, one of the things that the board has been working on is lower class sizes. So if we're using current teachers to teach these elective classes, how is it, how, what will the impact be to the courses that are already offering, will the class sizes go up immensely or not?
So in this particular case, um, we're collapsing those courses because this is in place of the Computer Science course.
So we're-
So we're collapsing the intro and giving it a Project Lead the Way designation.
Okay.
Which offers the math and science credit.
So is that-
Where the other courses were just electives.
Is that intro course, Computer Science course, the one that was through the Teles grant, the Microsoft?
What's wonderful is that, um, Project Lead the Way does recognize a Teles program and we can still work together.
I think it's great, I just wanted to make sure, switch, impact and stuff, I, I love what I'm hearing, it's awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that-
Sorry, this is Anthony, I, I mean, I, I, um, I saw those slides, um, and I'm glad this program is, is, is growing. But my question was not so much computer science, but, um, the traditional sciences of physics and chemistry and calculus.
We'll get to the, in a second, that's the Reach, Research Literacy course, sir. I misunderstood, I thought you were going down the math and-
Anthony, I think that she's going to be touching upon stuff with the math and science a little bit later.
Okay.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay. We would also like to introduce Business Program. So an academically prepared student possesses common core skills, higher-order thinking skills, analytical skills, essential computational skills, writing and reading skills and technology skills. A career-ready person capitalizes on personal strengths, talents, education and experiences to bring value to the workplace and the community through his performance, skill, diligence, ethics and responsible behavior. So some of the courses that we'd like to introduce are Computer Applications or Keyboarding, Introduction to Business and Marketing, Business Law, Personal Finance, Accounting, Entrepreneurship, and finally provide our students with an internship experience and education. So according to the Princeton Review, Business is one of the top ten most studied majors in higher education. It's actually second after Biology. So listening to our students, we realize we're, we're really not preparing our students for the studies that they would like to take in higher education. And this would be a wonderful opportunity for them. Finally, certainly not the least, we would love to have a social worker in our, in our high school, an additional social worker, um, to help our students, families and teachers address problems such as truancy, social withdrawal, over-aggressive behaviors, rebelliousness and the effects of physical, emotional and economic problems. Our, currently, our support staff is overstretched. In addition, we would like to have a social worker that is also certified in drug and alcohol counseling. We would like to provide additional support to students who have substance abuse and help them and their families manage and cope with personal issues. We would like to see our students who are suspended meet with a counselor who can implement behavior management strategies and coping skills. So when you, one of the worst parts of my job is suspending children, but unfortunately, we have, you know, that, those are the parameters that I have to work with them, I have to discipline a child. It takes away their sense of normalcy. Having a social worker will definitely help them make the transition back into the high school and support them while they're out of school. The Science Literacy course, I should have mentioned that earlier, I apologize. It is an introduction course. It is, um, partnership with SUNY Albany. So our students have to take a science research course to prepare them while they're in eleventh and grade and eleventh and twelfth grade work with a legitimate science research personnel. So they choose a topic, um, of their choosing and they work with an actual research person. And that's really exciting, in, exciting. In addition to that, our students can earn up to six college credits with SUNY Albany in their junior year and six college credits senior year. So that answers, um, your question with science.
Thank you.
Forgot to mention that earlier after, um, Science Essentials. So with all that being said, um, these courses, programs and the personnel that I, um, propose, I believe that, and that are needed in the high school, there's been research done by Strategic Planning Committee that supports our proposal. Most importantly, we've had numerous conversations with our students and their hope for the future and what they believe they need to be successful. Our students want wonderful learning memories from Beacon High School. And the next slide, just, just a couple of students. Oh, is this- Mike.
So in the, in the meantime, I'll ask, it gets down to, so are we going to implement all this? Or are we hoping to implement it, or?
We, uh, we probably overthought like the order of these slides. There's a staffing slide coming up. And, um, what we're proposing at the elementary level is, uh, one more teacher to do, uh, to kind of, I don't want to say finish, but we need one more teacher for the elementary class size reduction initiative. Uh, we started this year with the fourth grade instrumental music, which is grant-funded. We want to continue that, so that will be a budget initiative for next year. And then at the high school, we're proposing, uh, one social worker, which would be an FTE, a business teacher, which would be an FTE, and a halftime art teacher to do the architectural, interior design and sculpture. Right now, Emery and I, I think we got a little closer today. But we are, uh, with the, with the governor's budget proposal, um, if, if, if the, if we just got the state aid based on Governor Cuomo, we probably would not be able to fund the business and the halftime art. However, most years, aid does increase from the governor's proposal. In fact, I think every year it does. So we're feeling pretty confident that we can get all this done. But advocacy, advocacy committee, now we know what we're advocating for. Uh, you know, the, these, these classes that quite honestly, a lot of the high school students have been asking for and the teachers too. So we're just about there and, uh, and we're finding, we're working on finding some savings in other places to get there as well. So not just to rely on the state, but we're very close.
Thank you.
Well, I guess a question about the, the language. Are we going to continue, are we going to pursue the Mandarin or is that just off the table in the future or?
Uh, I, I don't have a third language off the table. I think we can keep looking at it, it would be another budget initiative.
So, because that was initially, we had a grant that funded it?
We did, that would just have funded a year. But it's not, like, we can't use it like two years from now, it's, you know. So it would be a new budget initiative to hire a teacher. We kind of thought Italian was like the, you know, the more physical way to do it. Plus, you already heard, we have a teacher who is very capable and able to do it.
How are we drumming up business for new courses? How are we drumming up the business, like enrollment?
So currently, our school counselors are meeting with their students on an individual basis and informing them of the program. And then we also have the Spanish teacher going into the course, uh, into the classroom just letting students know about the opportunity to take on a, um, an additional course. We also had, um, articulation between our high school counselors and our middle school counselors to let them know that this may be coming down the pipe, just to see if we can get some interest as well.
And the other question I had for the new courses is, oh, I, I heard a lot of them were AP or, uh, college credit. What about for the struggling learner, the ones that may not be at the AP or that college level course? Like, will they have opportunities for similar courses?
So, um, what's, what's wonderful about AP is that that's actually for all of the students. It's not just for the student that- It's not just for the student that is the honor roll, um, student. It's actually to challenge anyone who wants to, especially to anybody who's interested in taking on the extra rigor. Um, and we also have the additional electives as well. So there's a variety of courses, the business courses, the computer essential courses. They're open to all of our students.
Do, do we, um, just something for the future, because this is something that we've been trying to expand our offerings every year. It would be great to see what we increased, what was well received and is staying, and then what we're adding for this year, because I know we had guitar or the courses from last year.
I think all of the courses that we added were very well subscribed to so far.
It would just be great to see that, like, I know these are hard on the budget presentations. And one of the things that I've asked for separately is just if we could have more sort of check-ins with what's going on in school. And it would be great with the high school offerings, just to see how things have grown because-
We can, we can pull that together.
Yeah, it would just be nice.
I would honestly like to have more computer classes because they are interesting and I really like using technology like that and they'll help you in the future for college.
A computer class that we don't have, I think that I would really enjoy though, would have to be a, uh, more of a science space. Um, and with that, I just would like to have, you know, to understand the software behind it, how, you know, great scientists can, you know, use the computer to their advantage.
Uh, we have math and technology, which helps a lot, but it also maybe something even broader, more, um, bigger than that.
One computer class that I would like to see would be a class where it teaches you how to, not just like financial math, but just math when it comes to your money in general.
Most kids now my age lost the technique of typing, of typing like on a keyboard. We type on our phones. I want that to be implemented back in because not everywhere you go, not every industry you're in, you can use a tablet or a phone to type.
Personally, I think we should get a course involving either like business or marketing or advertising because it's such a big field that like a lot of seniors are going into and there's nothing in high school to really prepare you for that.
More financial courses to help you out with dealing with taxes and really how to handle your money in life.
I think there could be more people, courses focusing on, um, things like finances, because that is something that, um, people could still struggle with. Um, even just after high school, let's say they're not going to college, they, that's still something that they could use just in everyday life. And maybe some more classes like financial math or classes that give us actual like real world skills that can help us in the future.
I think when it comes to the advanced placement options that are here, for students who wanna go to the more competitive schools in the nation, it would look better on their resumes to have the more APs on it.
I think there's, um, a decent amount of people who would want an AP music theory course, uh, especially with, if people were already within, uh, the music, um, arts, uh, parts of the school.
I think I'd also like to see some higher level music classes because as of now, the only music classes that I've ever really been able to take at Beacon are the basic classes.
Many of them told me that they wanted to take French because Spanish is an easy class for them because in Beacon, many people already speak Spanish, many people already know the language. So it's not a difficult class. They want to learn another language to develop themselves.
I think other languages like Italian, German would be cool and not just like one other foreign language.
I know there's like DCC Spanish and stuff like that. I feel like there should be like more foreign language classes like Italian, French, German. Cause there's many people that want to like travel around the world and like see different things, college prep class. Because a lot of people when they leave high school, they don't know how to do laundry or taxes. Because unless you take financial math, that stuff isn't really taught to you.
So maybe more DCCs or APs that would give me skills that would actually help me in college.
I think things like internship, uh, awareness, things like how we have, uh, career fair. We can do that with internships and then people would get experience in their field or even talk to people who could help them gain that experience in a field that they're interested in. Because not, it's very likely that you don't know exactly what you wanna do in high school. So internships really help with that and I think, like, I would really enjoy having that opportunity.
Thank you for your inspiration. Thank you very much.
Well, I'll have a question.
Oh, there's one more question, I think.
I'm sorry. Um, so I, I think I've mentioned before on, um, uh, um, CTE certifications, I know we send kids up to Paul's piece for that, but, you know, we do, we still have one CTE teacher. And I know that, uh, there's, um, possibly in the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three to the overhaul of TV studio. You know, there's stuff with video that, that, that could be, um, that, uh, R and I said website for CTE programs like of the TV video production, video game design, stuff like that, that could use a, um, you know, a studio type setting. Um, and, and from what I understand, and I may be wrong, CTEs, they, you know, they have some industry experience they could bring into the classroom. Um, you know, have you considered that or are, are that still in consideration for maybe for a future, uh, uh, move? And, you know, again, also preparing our students for, um, you know, for careers and college, um, you know, any certifications that they can get um, while still in high school, including, I mean, I, I'm glad we're, we're making more offers for college credits, but any other, uh, credentials that will help them, um, in the future, uh, I think would be cool.
And that's a big yes. We are working on developing our TV production program as well. We're just, we're in the beginning stages of our conversation right now. But we are aware that that is a wonderful opportunity and experience for our students that we need to develop and explore in depth.
Very nice question. Will it be accredited as a CTE program or, you know, something where the students can, can, can form with the promo and maybe push further?
We, we don't know yet, Anthony, but we'll do more research on that.
Okay.
Hello. So I was very impressed with the business education and the, the fact that half of the students talked about practical finance, which is, I think, a big hole and, uh, we should be filling that. Do we have plans for a course in like practical finance, what you need to know when you go out these doors into the, what we call the real world, when it's not just mom and dad, but you need to learn to rent an apartment? Couple of students mentioned, what about taxes? Yes, you'll have to grapple with that. Uh, buying or leasing a car, uh, the list goes on and on. And you need it soon, even if you're going to college, there's still a lot of issues of financial planning that you need right then to know if you're gonna be able to afford to finish. What do you, we have planned?
So that's actually goes in line with the business courses and teacher that I'm proposing. We currently have what we call a financial math course that touches upon some of those concerns that you just mentioned, but we want to have, um, more courses offered for our students along those lines. So we are in agreement that there is a need and we wanna fulfill that for the students knowing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just, uh, and we're gonna stay up here because we, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do PD and then we're gonna go through years two and three a little bit more quickly. But just to review, I talked about this sort of, and we were getting the PowerPoint up. So what we're proposing, uh, in the nineteen-twenty budget is to have one more teacher added to the elementary level. Uh, just to remind everyone, half of our elementary classes are below twenty. The other half are between twenty and twenty-four. Uh, we have one class, that's the outlier at twenty-five, and that's a fifth grade class. So, uh, we're expect, we expect all of our classes to be under twenty-four next year. Uh, at the high school level, we're proposing, uh, one social worker, again with that, uh, special of the drug and alcohol counseling certificate, we think would be very helpful. We also foresee this person working with students at Roundabout as well, primarily, primarily at the high school, but, uh, serving needs at Roundabout, um, when they arise. And then the business teacher and the halftime art teacher, we're very, uh, comf- or we're fairly confident that we'll get it done. And, uh, just hopeful that Albany can work out all their differences and give us a little bit more aid and we'll get there. We wanted to just put that sort of placeholder there, just because we can't commit quite yet, uh, to that full package. Just one note also about, um, about, uh, the students who go to the, uh, Career Tech program at Bosse's. Uh, this is just either a reminder, I can't remember if this is new information, but, uh, Beacon, on a proportional basis, our students utilize the CTE program at Bosse's uh, higher than any other district in Duchess County, except one. Pine Plains, uh, uses, uh, proportionally the most, but then Beacon is number two. Uh, we have fifty-nine of our students currently in the, uh, Career Tech program up there. Uh, the last two valedictorians of the program have been Beacon students. And so we, uh, we kind of have a, and our goal next year, oops, as well as to, uh, to fund, uh, to fund the students who wanna go, to not put a cap on it. And so that's our goal. And so I think, you know, just from that standpoint, uh, Beacon really values, uh, the program at Bosse's. And so we wanna continue that. Uh, so these are just, uh, some initiatives. I'll hit a couple quickly actually, and then Eric will fill in one. We just wanted to remind folks that the high school will be doing, uh, one-to-one Chromebooks next year. We, uh, we, you know, have been doing that at the middle school this whole year and we're just doing all grades at the high school, maybe not all on the same day. Uh, but in, at the start of the year, we're going to Chromebook, uh, the high school. And we also will have, uh, Mike Keely mentioned in his presentation a few months ago. Uh, high school classrooms will all be outfitted with, uh, with, uh, the teaching screen, smart boards, uh, which we don't currently have in all our classes. So we're excited about that too. Eric's gonna quickly hit the other initiatives.
So, Mr. White, we've listened, we've listened long and hard to you. We're looking at what we can do differently at our middle school. So we're looking at, um, at adding our middle school computer-based benchmark assessments. Uh, currently right now, in grade six to seven, we're using, uh, a reading assessment called Narcissum For Now, which is a similar assessment that we use in grades three to five. At grade six, it works very well because of the fact that they have a double block in, in literacy, in ELA. But in our seventh grade, it's a little bit more of a challenge. So we wanna find something that may support our teachers, uh, a little bit better. So we're looking at six to eight next year of, uh, putting in computer-based benchmark assessments. Uh, so we're looking at the different, uh, programs that are out there now and we're making a more decision.
Now, you know what I'm gonna say, Eric. What about the elementary grades?
We'll step back.
Boy, President. In terms of reading and math, we're reading, we're looking at the fact that standards have changed and we have to ensure that we are, um, looking at curriculum and making revisions as needed. In terms of math, we have, we have been looking at, uh, in our middle school, potentially changing, uh, the, the, the workbooks or the resource that we're using, uh, currently. Uh, we just went, a couple of weeks ago, I took a team of teachers from the math, from the math department at the new school and one elementary teacher to Bosse's for what they had, what they call a math vendor day. We had the opportunity to see, uh, different vendors come out and present to us just the opportunity, I mean, just the different curriculum that are out there as well as just supplementary materials as well. Um, everyone was impressed by some of the latest things that are out there. So we're looking to see what can we do differently for next year. Over the summer, we wanna put in, uh, over the summer, we wanna continue the work that we've been doing for the course of this year. Um, I'm sure you may recall, at the end of last year, we received a math-science, uh, partnership grant. Uh, very own, which we have linked as part of that, uh, part of that, uh, program. Uh, we've been working with Clarkson University, uh, Be- and Beacon Institute, and we've had teachers at both our middle school and our high school as part of that grant. Uh, this summer, we will be almost, we will be at the point where we'll be wrapping up the curriculum writing for the project. And in September, uh, the teachers will be presenting their proposal. For our elementary schools, we will be looking at adding STEM curriculum, uh, developing STEM curriculum. We started that process already this year. We're working with a company called TEQ, um, T Equipment. And, uh, we've had curriculum writing taking place in grades three to five. What we found is that, uh, this initiative has been really exciting for our teachers. Uh, by the end of this school year, each grade from grade three to five will have a module that they will be able to implement in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. Professional development for our elementary schools, as I just talked about, math and ELA professional development. Uh, moving forward, responsive classroom training. Back at our professional learning day on March eighth, we had, um, responsive classroom, uh, consultant from responsive classroom come in. We provided four-day training for about twenty, about twenty to twenty-five teachers. Uh, it was well received by all the teachers and administrators that were in attendance. We're looking towards having, uh, to come back in the summertime. We're actually in discussions now. Um, everything is almost wrapped up, so we'll come back in the summer and do a four-day training. In addition to that, it was well received by the, by the, uh, by the county. And so we will have a second opportunity through Bosse's. For our middle school, um, we're looking at restorative practices. Back at our last, I mean, professional learning day, um, Duchess Mediation Center came out and provided, uh, two hours of training for, uh, for each department on restorative practices. Um, since then, we've, there's been some training that's taken place for, for six teachers. Uh, two guidance counselors at the middle school, two additional teachers at the middle school and two teachers at, at our high school. Um, one session took place this past Friday and another session will take place this Friday. These are four institutes. They are eight-hour days. We're looking to, what we'll do from there is that we'll use them to help support our leaders in each of the buildings with, uh, restorative practices moving, moving forward. And for those of you who know, um, who know what happens during that time is that when we have students that, um, that, uh, that need additional support due to behaviors, et cetera, uh, we can take them through what's called circle practices so that we're able to work out the problems and then make sure that students are feel that they're getting the support that they need to be successful in school. We talked about the math-science partnership already at our high school. Um, as Ms. Soto talked about earlier, Project Lead the Way. Um, for that teacher that will be going to, that will be receiving, uh, professional development this summer, is it two week? It's for two weeks, uh, two consecutive weeks. Um, after the training, the teacher will be certified to teach the Project Lead the Way course, which is Intro to Computer Science. It's called Computer Essentials. Uh, similar to our, our middle school, we will have a cohort that will be trained in restorative practices. We will help facilitate during the two thousand and nineteen, two-school year. And then there will be standard training as well in ELA math and science because of the changes that have taken place, uh, in with the New York, with New York State. K-12, we, we have some initiatives, I mean, we have some professional development that'll take place for the entire district. The co-teaching support, uh, for our ICT classes, Ms. Glendello talked about that earlier. Uh, we have, we have, uh, pre-K to twelve, um, ICT, uh, classes. And so what we wanna do is make sure that we're providing those teachers with the support they need so they're able to support our students. We're looking into having an engagement institute as well. Last summer, we had John Antonetti, consultant by the name of John Antonetti come out and provide some, some training to our principals. We wanna now move that to our, our teachers. And so we're looking at having a two-day session with, uh, teachers and administrators. And then lastly, uh, K-12 for the summer, we're looking at having some training in the dignity framework. In your packets, I'm sure you received something from the core collaborative, a gentleman by the name of John Crown Apple. Uh, we found, Dr. Landauer and I found him, uh, a few, a few months ago uh, because he's done some great work, uh, in many places, New York City being one. Um, he's also done some work in Ferguson, Missouri during the time of the riots. Uh, he leads from, you know, the standpoint of, of, uh, understanding what dignity is all about. Although our goal will be equity, in order to get to a point where we have an equitable practices, we need to look at, um, showing that there is dignity first. When we value, when we get to a point where we value everyone, then we will achieve equity for all. During the summer, we will, we will be able to train, uh, at least forty-five, uh, staff members in this dignity framework. And then what we will do is we will look forward to having, um, additional training, each year, training an additional forty-five plus teachers. For the twenty-twenty-one school year, um, we'll be able to get the business internship program off the ground. We'll look at Project Lead the Way, adding, uh, AP computer science- We'll look at Project Lead the Way, adding AP computer science principals course. And then at the middle school, our goal is to implement Project Lead the Way. They have a different series, it's called the Gateway Series, and what that consists of is ten-week modules.
With the dignity framework, is that something where the teachers then come back and share with their colleagues what they've been trained in?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It would, but our goal is to do, to do three cohorts over three years and have probably about forty, forty-five percent of our people trained in it over three years. So I just also wanted to say, as we're heading into this sort of year two and year three of this plan, we're gonna go a little bit more quickly, and, and these are just sort of, you know, these are some ideas we have based on, you know, a lot of feedback that we've gotten or needs we see in the district, but there's obviously a lot of filling in and fleshing out years two and three that we need to do. So, and I also just want to say, going back to, you know, what we have planned for the next school year, a lot of listening went into that. I want to commend the high school administrators for doing a lot of listening this entire year. I want to commend Noone Annie for really leading the charge, really trying to capture student voice. I tried to get into it a little bit and had student focus groups, I'm having them across all our schools, and Noone Annie to their credits, sat through every single one of those, no matter what the age. But what you're seeing is a lot of things that we're seeing from all these different points in the district. So just some ideas for staffing for the future, I'm not gonna go deeply into this, but if you spend any time listening to people in Beacon, you will know that a lot of people have a high interest in full-day pre-K. Currently, we have half-day and, and full-day for kind of the obvious reasons, it's great for the kids involved, but it's also better for the families. So we are going to explore how to get it off the ground. If we did it across the board, it'd be a very expensive proposition, where we'd probably be looking at adding several teachers to the budget, so we're gonna look to find ways to pilot it and look for grant funding for that. And then another staff you need, we're potentially seeing, is one that's focused on professional development. TOSA stands for Teacher on Special Assignment, and Dawn talked about one, potentially helping teachers, you know, with students with, with behaviors in a class and supporting teachers that way. We could have a literacy TOSA, a technology TOSA, there's lots of different directions we can go in with that. So those are just some ideas for the future, but we wanted to put them out there to show that, you know, we're doing some planning and thinking about that, but also to say to the community that these are some things we're thinking about.
Have a question on that.
Yeah.
So are those two, two people on the FTEs, they're additional or reassignments?
For that year, they would be additional, yeah. When you have a TOSA, at least my experience within the other districts is you, you, it's just usually for a year that the person comes out of the classroom, so, so the cost is that person who's replacing them for that year.
Right.
But pre-K, we're gonna need to study more, I'm not sure if we would do it with, with an existing person, if we're just piloting with the class, like, we'd have to do a lot more research on that. I'm probably thinking it would be an additional staff person. That's why we're gonna look at trying to do it through grant or state funding.
When would we know more decisions about these two positions?
It would be probably next year this time.
This is two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. These are just some, some ideas for the future that we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone read on how the preliminary results in Echoing Core Card is going to head to that curriculum?
Yeah, thank you for that. We had a great conversation at the diversity meeting the other night, and, and there was a really strong call for us to use data better to help guide our decisions and be clear about what our goals are. You know, so a lot of this professional development, this is year two of this, and you'll see a lot of it is repeating. It may not seem exciting to repeat, but it's so important for a school district to stick with the same goals and just try to get more teachers trained, which is what we're trying to do here. So with that in mind, the things we're doing with like responsive classroom, restorative practices, dignity framework training, all of those, our goal would be a reduction in students who are written up for referrals, a reduction in students who are suspended from school, and a reduction in the amount of time that students are out of school on suspension or in-school suspension. We'll be clear with what those data goals are, you know, in the coming months, but that was great feedback the other night, and, and so I just want to be clear. There's other ways to sort of measure the effectiveness of this, I think a great way is to do student climate surveys, which is asking all of our students from some grade up, usually you start in fourth or fifth grade, but you're asking students what their experience is like in school. So two key indicators for us, for some of these are a reduction in referrals, a reduction in suspensions, a reduction in the time students spend either in-school or out-of-school suspension, and also student climate surveys. So those would be something we would look at. I think, Anthony, we'd also be looking at, you know, the students who are enrolling in these classes. Elisa talked about wanting to, wanting to really try to open a lot of these classes up for a wide range of students in the high school. That takes leadership, that takes really setting an intention out there, so we need to be really supporting students who want to do that, but also putting the word out that we, that we want our classes to be more open. So those are just two data points. Obviously, you know, I shared, I shouldn't say obviously, but I shared some of the research around responsive classroom, it's on that website that I sent to the board. Responsive classroom is an elementary model that can actually move up to, to middle school, but along with having a really deep impact on student behavior, it also, through some really good studies, increases student achievement in schools that implement it fully. So we're excited to get that moving. The university that did this study was University of Virginia, which is one of the greatest education schools in the country. So just again, this cohort model, we're really gonna push this, we are going to like track the people who are in these different cohorts. We, we want to get to a place where, you know, almost all or all of our teachers have gone through the responsive classroom training, or the restorative practices training on a deeper level, or the dignity framework, or the engagement institute. Like, that culture of care, that culture of care doesn't just sort of happen. We need to support teachers in, in, you know, developing a deeper culture of care in their classrooms. That student engagement piece doesn't just happen, we need to train and support teachers. So these are really key, and again, it may not be like exciting, because it looks like we're just repeating stuff, but I will tell you this, districts, a lot of districts never do this every year, it's something different. So I'm excited to be putting this out there. And then, and then, Eric, do you want to talk about that briefly? I'm not, I'm not a roll. So this is just us expanding Project Lead the Way Computer Science into Rambut and, and coding or computer science into the elementary as well, and expanding that science research class to eleventh and twelfth grade. This would be year three of this whole thing we're putting out there, and the programming class, is that the class that would be added that year?
Yes.
Okay. Staffing for that year, so Mike was kind of referring to this, what we're envisioning, or somewhere in this timeline, I'm gonna find some other ways to represent this that are easier to grasp, like on a one-page or a two-page. In what we're projecting December of two thousand and twenty, we will have another capital project going out to the voters, and along with taking care of just building needs that we have, repairs, replacing roofs, et cetera, we also want to look at things that'll really improve the learning in our district. So with some of these courses, we were kind of thinking of the courses that were being developed, and we were thinking that we, and this is kind of a broad, a broad statement about a teacher, but someone who's going to focus even more on the STEM slash digital fabrication work at the high school. Again, I say expanding this full-day pre-K idea, again, looking at grants to fund it, again, looking at having a TOSA this year as well, in some area of need for the district. Professional development, again, you'll see cohorts, being year three of a lot of these cohorts. And then looking into the future, this would be, some of this would be dependent on this capital project we're talking about. But I say digital fabrication lab, it could be like a, you know, multi-use fabrication lab, but we're envisioning something at the high school where students are able to create more, make more, and we would need staffing to back that up, so that's why we're envisioning that need for that teacher that year. But that would be the year that we would be unveiling a new classroom or a new section of the high school. In my listening focus groups for high school students, I know Lisa is hearing the same thing, our high school students are craving, for lack of a better way of describing it, one way you could say is they're really craving things that are more real, more real experiences, things that feel both elevating from an academic level but also practical. And so we think that sort of more hands-on, creation-oriented classwork and a, and a learning space to back that up would be what our next step would be for the high school. So we're really excited about working on this further. I really want to emphasize, these are ideas right now and require a lot of input from the board, the community, and our staff. Another thing we're envisioning for this capital work and to unveil this year, or perhaps we can find some ways to, to make some of these changes in the television studio before that, but our television studio is outdated, and so we're envisioning sort of a placeholder this year, we kind of have the TV studio revamped. So there may be some work we do before a capital project, some might be included in the capital project, some we might need to fund through general fund, but we really need to update the television studio. Both, we're getting that input from the teacher side, the student side, and our new director of technology, Mike Keely, has also identified it as an area where we really, really need to update. So I sort of look back to the board meeting we had last year, I think, Mike, where you asked for the one-to-one initiative to be, is there any way we could speed this up? So the television studio part, I think, is one that we're gonna be looking for ways to speed that up and not just wait, you know, three or four years out to make all the changes. We're gonna be looking every year in the budget to find ways to fine-tune it. So we'll probably do a little bit of that for next year, but looking to really revamp in the coming years, the television studio. So.
Question.
Yeah, sorry for going so fast.
Is the television studio part of curriculum in class?
Yes.
Would overhaul that, I'm curious, because I just know that there's some crossover in some of the software, particularly the Adobe Suite, it's something that you can get a license for and have film, but also design software, is the same thing that would be in the, in works for crossover, some of these design options we're doing?
Mike might be the best person, Mike Keely, or Mike Gersh might be the best people to answer that. I do know that we want to be able to have the capability to have more like live broadcasts and, you know, have a broadcast every day that the whole high school can watch. That's kind of the standard for high schools right now, that they're able to do that, we don't have that functionality, so that's one of our goals.
So it would be a TV production course then?
Yes, yes. I went through all that really fast, but I just wanted to keep things moving a little bit. Anthony?
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna kind of echo James' comment, you know, the crossover, I was thinking in terms of, you know, a studio made, occupation is, is animation and, and you know, other types of, not just, not just direct live video, you know, I'd like for us to look into that as well.
Okay, we will. These things that are a little bit farther in the future require more research. One little note I want to add, several slides back, we talked about working on science curriculum and working on, you know, STEM curriculum at the elementary level, we're gonna be looking at ways to incorporate sustainability into that curriculum work, and we're talking with a, a sustainability expert actually later this week to find ways where we can get some teachers at least piloting some curriculum where that's folded in, so we're excited about that too. We are, so just a couple of quick goals, I'm working with a, a software company that takes strategic plans and both sort of makes them functional for inside the district, but also creates a dashboard for the public to look at, and so we hope to have our contract with them in place in the, probably the next month or so. And then I think the strategic plan will really start to feel, you know, like it's something that people can kind of monitor the progress on, and, you know, this is really just an overview, there's a lot that's gonna go into this, both from a metric standpoint and a sort of nitty-gritty steps and actions and all of that. But we're very, very excited to take all the student input and all this community input and put some three-year thinking in front of you, and, and I think it's just, it's just an exciting time to be in the district. So thank you for being such great listeners for the last hour.
I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate you laying out the plan for the restorative practice and the dignity frame, dignity framework and responsive classroom training at an ongoing basis, because, you know, we've made, one of our goals, a culture of care, and I feel like we should really also recognize that teachers are put in this position where they receive a lot of top-down mandates, often from the state or even from leadership, and that they are just as much in need of investment in recognizing the pressures they're under and having mechanisms to facilitate conversation and working through those, those very real professional struggles that they have. And so I feel like the culture of care also starts with our training, investing in our staff and our teachers, and I really appreciate that we're going to do that, and it's not just something we're saying, but rather something that we're going to provide them access to, and then, I, I had the opportunity to do a circle practice training this past January, and one of the things that really came out of it is it doesn't just benefit the people you interact with, but it becomes a way of understanding how you're operating in the world and sort of taking stock of that. And so I feel like, you know, these are professionals and a profession that's been under tremendous amount of pressure, and so if we can invest in them and begin our culture of care with them, that would be, I really appreciate that.
The second school I was a principal of, in my career, was a school that was really struggling, and both academically and every other aspect in elementary school, and so I think usually the move was to sort of drill down, get the kids ready for the test and all that kind of stuff. And while we, you know, certainly focus on curriculum and instruction, we, we did a really deep dive as a staff in a responsive classroom, and it really changed the building. And, you know, the academic achievement went up, but it felt, I think, very holistic to everybody, both teachers and students. And so, so it was very rewarding for me on the professional learning day to see twenty-five or so of our elementary teachers in a one-day training with responsive classroom, and we, I, I was a little nervous as to how it was gonna go, and, and they just really, they, they all sort of came to Eric and I saying, how can we get more, can we come this summer? You know, we got really great feedback from that, and it was a really diverse group of teachers too in terms of experience. So I know from experience, you have to go this route to make the changes you want to make, and it's just, it's exciting.
Great job, team, thank you very much.
Can we ask Noone Annie what they're most excited about, because you guys have just been an integral part, I mean, maybe it'll be in their board comments, but I feel like...
I didn't want to jump the gun.
Well, no, I don't know if it, if it isn't in your board comments, but if it is in your board comments, talk about it, okay. Yeah, because I feel like you guys really contributed so much to the...
You guys know you can speak up and ask questions at any time, right?
They get us, they get us at other times.
All right, can we please rise for a moment of silence for Maureen, who we approve retired as elementary teacher at Sartre? All right, thank you. All right, we have no adjustments to the agenda. Do we have any student or school presentations? Any parent groups? No one signed up for Open to the Public? Does anybody would like to adjust the board?
Hi, my name is Justin Lynch. I'm gonna do something that I've always told not to do, and I'm gonna make an assumption, and that is that the item that's listed under unfinished business, which is to discuss the proposal from Dutchess County regarding the assessment of Dutchess Stadium and the joint process of land, is for the county to potentially buy the property. Our relationship with the county in regards to this property has been easy up until December, at which in December, we found ourselves in this situation where in the middle of what seemed to be a budgetary fight, we were threatened with ownership of this stadium. I've hoped that the board would seriously consider any potential offer from the county. The costs involved with not, with not selling the property are extremely hard to quantify, and we're not here to be real estate investors, we're not here as developers. I hope that we can move forward, lease the asset, sell the asset off, and go back to focusing a hundred percent on just educating kids.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Any other comments?
Hi, my name is Lina Nettie. I am a sophomore at BHS. And I was listening to like the programs you guys are like trying to bring into like the school. And I want to go into the medical field. So I was thinking if we could have like a medical type program to focus on like those students who do want to pursue the medical field, like to expand and to really see like, is that what they want to do in life? It's like to learn about like, I don't know, like diseases or more about the human body and to explore like career options in the medical field. I think that'd be a great idea, but to just like extend it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Eric and Lisa, did you get that? Thanks for coming.
I'll teach it now.
Anybody else like to adjust the board? See, now we're going to go to superintendent's report.
Is it, is it illegal to, if you could just talk for an hour? Just a couple of quick things. We, I did four PTO meetings about the strategic plan and some, some indications of where we want, where we want to go with the budget. I'll do another round of PTO meetings after the board adopts the budget on April 20...
Second?
Twenty-third. And, and then I'm also going to be doing some community forums after the board adopts the budget to, in non-school places where we link the strategic plan to the budget. And I am trying to work with Southern Dutchess and AAACP to do a community forum about the equity report card. Dates are not worked out, but we're working on getting these dates in the next week or so. Thank you.
All right, so now we have unfinished business, which is to discuss the proposal from Dutchess County regarding the assessment of Dutchess Stadium and adjoining parcels of land. So the board had a special Board of Education meeting last week.
It was on the last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday. And that was seek legal advice for the process as to how to move forward. As everyone knows and is public knowledge, we entered into an MOU with the county to extend the lease with the county so they could start working out a deal with the Renegades and an agreement that how would we move forward. So the county has contacted us to, to proceed with that. And we have to decide, and I think the first part of the process was, do we want to do an assessment joint with the county? Or do we want to have, do our own? Appraisal, appraisal of the, with the county or the appraisal separate? So that's what we're here to discuss.
I think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse because we have not yet declared this property excess. And it seems to be proper procedure is that we would need to do that before we could move forward with anything else.
Which, which property?
Of course, you, we can also decide to just look at an appraisal first and then declare an excess later. I suppose you could do it one way or the other. But in either case, we need to look at some kind of serious evaluation of whether we want to access that property. In particular, that 23 acres on the north side, which is vacant land currently wooded. The county has never told us what they want to do with it. They have nothing in writing. They just want it for some reason. And when that land was bought in 1967, that board was very prescient because we wound up using it for our bus depot and our maintenance garage and a baseball stadium, of all things. So we got a lot out of it. If we follow proper procedure, as we will later tonight on a couple of items, one of which is our facilities director wants to have an auction deal so some of our surplus stuff can be sold, raise a little money. And Mrs. Soto has recommended the accessing of a number of textbooks. So we have a process for accessing things that we don't think we need. And I would call upon this board to follow that procedure with regard to this matter.
With all due respect, Craig, we entered into the MOU at the end of last year saying that we would work out what we want to do with it, either a long-term lease or a sale of the property. So I think that shows that the board was willing to explore options with the county as they had to move forward.
We're exploring options, yes.
So I think the next piece is to do, they contacted us to see how we want to go about for an appraisal. Do we want to do it in joint or do we want to do it on our own?
I think we, at the time, I think we should put out an RFP to get an appraisal, since that's part of our policy anyway. And then we can decide based on that, on those prices, we can forward those to the county and then get, get some sort of an agreement whether they're going to share the cost or not.
I don't think it's, I don't know, Anthony, I could be wrong, but I thought in the meeting that we discussed that it's not necessarily related to...
It is necessary, so...
It is now, okay.
Our legal sent up, sent out a memo that we...
That's right.
That we put on, and it does, so our lawyer has contacted some agencies and to see what the estimated cost would be, not knowing how we wanted to proceed, how if it would be subdivided, if it would be just the land underneath the stadium, and if we wanted it for retail, if we wanted it for purchase, for purchasing, how we would want the appraisals to go forth. The ballpark range, and it was a rough ballpark range, was 16 to 20, uh, $20,000 to complete the appraisals. I, I'm just going to throw it out there. I want to spend as little money as possible for something that doesn't go towards education. So I'm in support of anything that would reduce the district cost in any way possible to try and, as Craig says, access it so we could utilize the revenue towards education.
Are you talking about the appraisal cost or selling?
The, the whole thing. Appraisals, I think, should be joint if they're willing to split the cost. Let's split the cost at...
The issue that I understood with, the only issue that I can even vocalize about splitting the cost with the county was that they were asking us to use their, choose off of their list or...
I didn't take it that way. I took it that they provided three names of people that they knew did it.
Yeah.
I didn't think it was theirs.
So that was a question I think we had and thought we were going to hear back, was can we provide them with a list of our three? And they can choose three of, off of our list of appraisers?
Well, you know, I, I still think that, you know, we're all going to argue hypotheticals until we do the RFP process, which we finally do. You know, it doesn't commit us to spend the money on any of the appraisers, but it does get us the hard numbers that we can start negotiating with the county. Otherwise, we're going to still continue to talk about hypotheticals and then, and then we're going to end up in the same situation where they're going to want a new lease on the rest.
It sounds, it sounds like it's going to be a fairly small list of people that are qualified to appraise this property because it's a complicated and unusual situation. So, I mean, in the end, it may be if we're, if we want more than one appraisal estimate, that it could come off of their list. And I, I feel okay about that. I think this is a public process. I, I feel that we can, we can, you know, I definitely think that it's good to do our due diligence, but I think that we can, we can work with the county. I, I think we'll have to work with the county because I don't think we'll be able to find that many appraisers that can do this job beyond the list they've given us. There's one, there is one that our lawyer sent. But it was like, even that, he was, he had to go through four different people to find someone who was qualified.
Would we, were we asking for appraisal of the land as it is? Or was it just for the land or the land and the stadium?
Well, the, that's, that's what's, one of the things that's complicated about it. It's like the land and the parcels that are not part of the stadium land and, you know, and looking at it for sale and looking at what a lease would look like, just to have, you know, all of that information to make the decision.
They own the stadium. It's just on our land.
Right. So we would be selling the, the lands. We would want an appraisal of the land without the stadium.
Correct. But, but there's also the adjoining parcels.
And the adjoining parcels.
I think we talked about those different options. You know, the stadium land alone, what would be a reasonable rental cost? And what would be a reasonable, you know, sale cost price? And then the other 23 acres, what would be a reasonable rental price? What would be a reasonable selling price?
Well, I think the other thing that came up that the lawyer mentioned, our lawyer mentioned is that we can, there are two different ways to sell the land, and I can't remember the...
Four, 402 point something and 405 point something.
So one of them protects us from the county buying it and then just reselling the land for profit. So I, I think that there are a lot of different ways to, to protect the district from being taken advantage of in that way.
Right. There was a pro and con, like 402 was that there would be a fair market value for the, for the land. And then 405 was that the land, once sold, could, could only be used for public use, but didn't have that fair market value piece in there.
But the fair mar, but isn't the fair market value, I mean, if you get an appraisal that's based on fair market value, I feel like that's sort of built into...
I, I think what the specialty is to how this circumstance is, I think that is the case.
Well, that's what I understand as well. Once you put a condition on the land, you know, it's not, it's not the full value. It's kind of, you know, if asked to remain public forever, it's, it's going to be, it's not unreasonable for the buyer to ask for a discount. It's like any other, it's like an environmental, it's like any other reason.
Well, it seems like we would need to, we can't make any decisions until we know how much the land is worth, market value. In terms of the 23 acres, it seems to be we need to decide if it would be more valuable for the district to hang on to it, use it for another purpose, in which case I feel like maybe we would want to know what that purpose might be. But we can't really make any decisions until we know what it's worth.
So that's why we need to decide how to go about the appraisal.
Yep.
I think an RFP for five prices, one price. Two prices is for the, the land that the stadium is on, and then the adjacent for sale. And then one price, so there's two prices there. And one price for the rental of the land itself, so it's two prices, sorry.
If we...
I didn't get all of that.
Do you want to repeat that, Anthony?
Yeah, I think, I think what we're discussing is basically if there's a sale scenario, you know, the land that the stadium is on, that we, that we currently lease to them, the land that's north of that, the vacant land, so that's the second price, if we were to sell that. And then the third price is, what if we just continue to rent it to the, to the, to the, to the county? How much would the rental of the land that the stadium is on cost?
Would we want to, if we decided to lease, would we want to go ahead and separate the 23 acres and lease them only what the stadium is on?
That's a poor decision, but my personal opinion is, is that our administrators have shown us how schools could be expanded upon with additions. And to meet a growing population, if that happens, even though our population has been decreasing, but knowing that we may need more classrooms because a board goal is to have lower class sizes, which needs more room, right? So I think that there were drawings or simulations that showed how the current schools could be added on to. So getting out of the development piece and owning land that's not, has any educational use to it that we're using it for right now besides the bus garage, I would be in favor of having it all as one and see what it is. But that's just my personal opinion.
This is just about deciding to get the appraisal, right?
Right. I don't think we have to do an RFP though, because we're doing it in joint with the county.
Well, that's what I, that's what I said when I started. That was my first remark.
Well, that's what Anthony was saying, to do an RFP, so...
Right, and I, and I, that's what I was saying. I was like, do we, is that really required? Is that definitely in our policy? Does our policy describe these, describe this scenario?
If we do it solely, then we have to do an RFP. If we do it with the county, I do not believe we have to do an RFP.
I mean, it's, it's written into the MOU agreement that if we don't like this appraisal that we share with the county, then we have a right to get our own appraisal and split the difference.
Then it would be averaged out.
Yeah.
And aren't, I mean, I don't understand why Judy's not the person who's doing this because I thought she was one of the, the real estate side of things. But I feel like if we get it evaluated by our attorneys, then...
Get what?
The appraisal, like what's...
I mean, I would prefer, I would prefer an RFP for three prices, and I'll tell you why. One is that, you know, the selling of the land is a referendum for the voters to decide. And if the voter, I would be rather be transparent, let the voters decide whether or not we want to sell the land that the stadium is on, which, which we're generally in agreement, I believe, but it's up to the voters to decide that. Two, to sell the land that's vacant north of the, of the stadium. And the voters, I think, should decide that as well. So I believe it should be separate, separate items. And three, if, you know, if that fails, you know, how much would it cost to rent it to the, to the county? And I do feel that an RFP process could also be transparent to the, to the public because they can, they can see what, what we're asking for, for the appraiser. And then, you know, we could discuss the, the amounts that come back and why we've chosen, who are, you know, who will be the appraiser. So, and as well as it'll, it'll, it'll save us some time if we don't agree with what the county comes up with. I mean, I, I still don't understand why there's a resistance to an RFP if I think it'll save us time and it doesn't mean that we have to make the decision now on which, which, which appraiser we have to go with.
Is it an RFP or an RFQ? It sounds to me it's almost like a request for qualifications. From what I read in the material that came in our agenda, there's some thought about how it's hard, hard to find people who have a good background in this particular thing. And I'm not sure what exactly what the law requires, whether RFQ is the same as an RFP for the purposes of compliance. Maybe it could kind of be the same thing, like we want to know what your qualifications are and, and what you charge. So we can see who's got some background in doing this kind of stuff.
I also, so there's two different pieces here. One is, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, as we had like a, somebody from the public quote tonight about we're not developers or in the real estate business, and that's valid. And I think the struggle with this whole thing is that it's a bit complicated. And I, I, the way I understood it was that, when I read this, that there, there weren't a lot of people with these qualifications, that this was the last person that was used by the county. So it wasn't, initially, when we talked about it, we were like, why wouldn't we use our appraiser? We should use our own. But if there's a way, way of sharing costs. And then I, I assumed that there would be nothing about the process that wouldn't be transparent, Anthony, and that once, wouldn't the appraisal be public once it was completed? And the voters would have that knowledge of what was provided to us. And that if, and if in our memorandum of understanding, we had the right to pursue a separate appraisal, if we didn't agree with what we received, it seems it would be in the county's best interest in terms of timing, that they would not want to delay, and they would also want a fair assessment. So I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, I feel like. I, I didn't love, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So I'm, I'm not trying to say that we're not being transparent the other way around. But what I'm trying to say though is that it took us a while just to find one guy who was qualified. An RFP process, I believe, would probably, would go public. And any other, somebody else who believes they're qualified would also be able to compete. Somebody who that we don't know, or we don't know, you know, a friend of a friend of a friend or something like that may be able to compete for the RFP. And somebody who knew that we've never met before, but is, but is qualified.
Well, Anthony, one question though about that is, would be for Emery. Is this something where we would be bound by similar rules that...
Take the lowest bid.
But then we have to take the, like with construction, where we'd have to take the lowest bid?
It's not a bid, a request for proposal, you can write in it that you do not have to take, almost. Okay, but then, but then RFP is more of a form of process. So you're gonna, if you're going to send out a request for proposal, I mean, you can, you would be getting amounts that you would probably move forward with. An RFQ is a quote, so there's no binding amount there as well. So the other part is that it's time-consuming. To request for proposal, our attorneys and I would work on doing the wording and sending it out. It's putting a legal notice, it's having a timeframe. So depends on, that would just take some time to actually manage to do that.
Well, and be prepared for three of them to be the literary...
I just feel more comfortable, I just feel more comfortable trying to do a search for an appraiser rather than trying to find a friend of a friend of a friend.
I think the hard part was that because we, he was looking for someone that... I think the hard part was that, because we, he was looking for someone that wasn't mentioned by the county because the board was.
Right.
Wanted someone that the county didn't present to us. So he was searching for someone that the county didn't bring forward. So now you're, they, they sent three and we're at, looking for four or five when we know it's a small amount of people that do this amount of work, so you're then trying to expand it.
But I do, I mean, I do think I agree with Anthony. I think if I understand him, is it's just if we're doing our due diligence, it makes sense for the seller to find their own appraiser. I can't think of many situations to where you allow the buyer to choose the price of what they're.
We're not saying, all we're saying is that they said, here's three people that we know do it.
And we've worked with before.
That they've worked with before.
But they, they are, they're, they're under restrictions as far as like what they.
No, we could, we could do it.
These are, these are two public entities, that's what, it's not, it's not private sale.
No, guys, we have multiple conversations here, please.
Sorry.
These are, these are two public entities, so it's not a private sale where, I mean, everything that would occur and all the information that we receive would be public. And so if it, it wouldn't be in the county's best interest to look like they're policing a school district, you know, there, and they wouldn't necessarily. And we also can build in language to protect ourselves where we say. It, I think if it is a small pool.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna speak banking on the county's concern with how they look.
So.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm saying it's public information.
Am I hearing that you would be okay with a joint appraisal if it was agreed upon by both parties?
I would agree with it if it went through an RFQ process, which, which I believe would, um, uh, make it neutral.
Let's, I'm wondering if they, if the county is doing that themselves, could we, you know, could we see the RFPs that they collect from the three that they mentioned?
I, I, I don't think they're collecting RFPs, that's my issue.
I have a question, so in the letter that we have, it appears that we were recommended an appraiser by our legal team.
Well, that's what Anthony's talking about, the friend of the friend of the friend. Is we, there, we were told initially by the county that there, this is the pool, it's small.
Right, there are not very many who are qualified.
Right, and so then we asked for more and our attorneys found one person, and so, um.
I don't, I'm not seeing where the friend of a friend of a friend comes in. I don't get that from this letter, cause this is a friend of a friend of a friend.
That's what Anthony's, it's been characterized that way as somebody that was found for us through these other channels.
Through his reaching out, this is how he.
I understand, but I, to me, from this letter, it appears that the person who was recommended to us was recommended based on their experience, not because of who they know. So I'm just wondering why we're cynical about who this person might be.
I'm not, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I mean, I didn't mean friend in terms of leitism, but I didn't mean that there was a referral done. And while, while the referral could be totally, uh, legit, um, I think the way to measure all the different appraisers, especially if we're gonna, you know, I think it would also sidestep an argument with the county, whether they prefer someone else over who we prefer. It's just a ba- a basic, a standard, a standard formal process so that we get to, we get to see formal prices from, from the appraisers that are qualified and can make a, a more informed decision. And I think that's, I think that's another one of my problems is, is, you know, we're, we're, we're still playing around with how much each of these appraisers are gonna charge us. We have one ballpark price, um, but if we don't initiate a formal program, the formal process to get those prices, um, we're still guessing.
Is RFQ a shorter timeline?
It's about the same, I mean.
Is it the same process as an RFP process?
It's the same process, it's that you can't use the RF, you can't use the quote to go forward, you have to, uh, put out an RFQ in addition to. So it doesn't sound like it would save any time doing that.
Are we concerned about time, is this an issue? Yeah, I feel like this isn't necessarily, I think we need to rush.
I mean, I mean, I, I think, I think we're gonna want an appraisal anyway because, you know, we, we only have a one-year lease extension with the county on the stadium. We're gonna want to know how much the market value is to rent that land in case the sale does not go through. And we wanna want the prices of the sale in case the rental doesn't go through. So I, I really don't see why we should delay. You know, we're gonna need those numbers anyway, um, one way or the other, um, I don't see why we should wait.
But so if we do an RFP, is, is your thought that then we would, through the RFP, tell the county, this is who we wanna go forward jointly with?
And they would share the cost of the appraisal?
Did you hear that, Anthony?
No, I didn't at all.
If, if they, you're, are you thinking that if we do an RFP, then we would be choosing an appraiser that we would then move forward jointly with the county to share the cost of the appraiser?
Yes.
So we're looking at a joint RFP?
That way we won't, you know, we, we will hopefully be satisfied with who we chose and we won't have to entertain the step of, of getting a second appraiser if we don't like the price.
Does it have to be a joint RFP technically?
I don't know why we would wanna have, take time away from our people to do this when the county's willing to do it. I don't know what, what's the concern with county people sharing their resources and coming up with a joint appraisal? I, I don't understand what the concern is, like, what has the county done to, like, make us so skeptical that they're trying to basically not pay fair market value for this land? And that we're expending all this resource?
I guess not, even though the county waits for the last minute to tell us anything or to do anything, that's what makes me skeptical.
Yeah, I do feel, I mean, there was, I don't, I think that, that there was, the last process in December was a bit bruising.
Right.
It was also just something that was.
I'm not denying that, and I think that there were some political aspects going on at that time as well. I mean, ultimately, the deal got done and the extension happened.
Right, but this would be the fallout of that, feeling pressured and rushed and trying to have some ownership. And I mean, I think that, I'm not saying that I'm interested in prolonging anything, but if you're, if you're wonder, if your question is legitimate and that you're wondering what the county has done, they, they, that, there were a lot of things that were put forward in that meeting where it was like the stadium, it, it felt quite a bit of like brinksmanship, it was a little bit mildly, sort of like, you know, we might not get this C of O that we need, we might not, they, they played a pretty heavy hand. And so I think that that might be informing some of the hesitancy about, you know, where, about working together. And I'm not being completely cynical, but I'm just saying that it's, it's really not like a, it's a question that has an answer, which is, it wasn't the easiest process and it did not feel like it unfolded in a way that was putting the best interests of children, you know.
And I, I mean, to add to that also, I mean, we also have had twenty-five years of county dramatically underpaying. You know, I mean, this is, like, we don't know how far under, undermarket it is, cause we don't know because it wasn't, it hasn't been assessed in so long. So I think it's just in terms of not repeating, uh, the kinds of mistakes that could have happened in the past, like.
We don't know if it's undermarket though.
I think.
Right, we're guessing.
You're saying it's undermarket, so your assumption is that it is undermarket, you're coming from that piece.
I'm comfortably gonna make the assumption that it's undermarket.
I know, but I also am. Can we ask them to do an RFP of the three that they mentioned though? Or so that they, because I, I also would rather our, you know, the district staff not spending time on doing this. That, that's my hesitation, Anthony, is just like trying to avoid.
Trag.
Yeah.
I would think that, I would think that the county would welcome that we're, we're actually taking the lead so that they don't, uh, I don't know if it's too busy, maybe, giving the benefit of the doubt, that they can't do anything, uh, that quickly. But I would just think that the county would appreciate that we're, we're actually doing some of the work to help them.
I don't, I don't, I actually don't care about that too much, I'm sorry to be blunt, but it's not really, like, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about that side of things.
I don't even care either, but I don't see why the county would have a problem with us going with an RFP. I mean, I would think they would thank us.
Well, I think what Meredith was asking was if we, if our condition was that the county put out an RFP so we could see that they went through a process and that we would, then, then it wasn't just the, it wasn't like just one person that, you know, one firm that rose to the top. It would be, you know, sort of public as far as what the options were, and then if we jointly paid, I, I, then that would have some benefit. I think the one outstanding question related to that is, we have different ways of looking at this. Craig has been pretty firm about the north twenty being a separate parcel. So we do have conditions that where our interests don't overlap. So if they wanna look at the whole parcel and we have enough of us or of the opinion that we wanna see those different prices, then it is on us to at least get that appraised for ourselves.
Yes, yes, it is, and, you know, I don't wanna get caught in the same situation where the county, if we let the county do the RFP, they only give us a couple of days or a week to make the decision whether we like what they put out or not. You know, I really don't like, I really don't like to be in that position again, you know, shame on, um, pull me once, shame on you, pull me twice, shame on me. I'd rather just take, you know, no pun intended, you know, start driving this bus.
I think there was a pun intended. Well, did we have confirmation that if we brought our own appraiser in, that they would still share the cost of the appraisal?
I don't think we heard from Emery that piece.
I mean, I, I, I don't wanna spend any more money on this than we need to, of course. But, I mean, the, the land, even just looking at the, the parcels, they're estimated at like one and a half million dollars on there. Like, twenty thousand dollars for appraisal is not percentage to the value of the total, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be significant to me. So I think in terms of like choosing your appraiser and setting the price versus someone else, the margin of difference would, I would assume is probably larger than that.
I, I still don't see any reason that we can't share the appraisal cost with them, but.
Well, they, they offered to, they agreed to share the cost, so I think that was a question.
The only reason.
That we had to answer on yet was that, you know, if we said, hey, this is, we were proposing proposals and we have these appraisers, will you still share the cost? I think that was a question.
Yeah, well, I think there's that question and then the different, the structure of the appraisal. Those are the two things that would need to be worked out, which is how committed are we to getting, to breaking apart the different pieces of the parcel, which is I think something we did talk about in the special meeting. And then finding out if we did the RFQ process, is it RFP or is it RFQ?
It's RFP if we.
So what are you saying, the two things that we have?
The two things would be, one is if we did our own RFP process and we selected a firm of our choosing, if the county would still be interested in sharing the cost. And we'd probably have to structure the RFP to reflect the different configurations we would like appraised of the parcel.
So maybe we can have a discussion about that, like, do we wanna divide it up or do we wanna not?
Yeah, let's just finish what, what it would be, cause then we could talk about it, just so we could keep the thing organized. So if, if, after discussion, we decided, then, then we would need to put out the RFP to reflect the different configurations of the appraisal, then we would need to see if the county would be willing to continue, once we did that and we selected an appraiser, if they would still be willing to share the costs and for which configuration. So then we would know, if we decided here to break up the appraisal, then we would know what portion of it would be shared costs, if at all, if we did our own process of picking the person. And then if we were acting completely in our self-interest and wanted these, this, these particular configurations, what portion of it we would end up paying for on our own.
Can I, just to, to point to that, if we decide, cause we're gonna have to split the land at some point cause we, we're gonna maintain control of the, our, our garage.
By law, we can't sell that.
Let's, we're not.
By law, we can't.
Yeah. So it would make sense to me for us to, regardless if we sell both the twenty-three north acres uh, and the land on the stadium, to go ahead and make those divisions. So we're making two sales to them, or possibly one sale to them. So if we make the decision to divide the, the parcels now, uh, and then those are divided, then it's not really an issue in terms of the RFP is to like, do they need to, to do our configuration or their configuration? We say the land is, is two parcels, we can do, you can, we can do an RFP for, to get prices for those two parcels that are interested. And once we have the price for those, then we can talk about it, so.
Do, yeah, no, I, I mean, are they currently configured as, there's what they're renting? And then do we own the north twenty-one and we're not?
It's all one parcel.
It's all one parcel, but they're only renting the.
Yeah, they're not, they're not taking the north twenty-one as part of the lease agreement.
They, they aren't or they are?
They just do not.
Okay, so it's already, then what would be the steps of dividing that in terms of the sale? Is it something we would have to declare as?
I don't know why we would wanna divide it, why do we want the land?
Well, I would say just let the voters decide that.
That was.
Give the voters the price of how much each one, each one would cost and let the voters decide that.
Well, I don't know, I mean, that, that we need to.
The education piece, we wanna hold on to land that we have no use for.
I also think that that's, um.
I'd agree.
What's the use for it then?
This district is perpetual in duration. Now, fifty-two years ago, our predecessor board made a decision to buy a land bank. And over the years, they didn't decide to build a high school or a middle school there cause they wound up getting some better situated land from the same seller, the state of New York. And that's why we have Brown Bow and why we have Beacon High where they are. Same thing with some of those factories on Route fifty-two, the city of Beacon got that land from the state, it was accessed by the state. And so now, you, you look into the future and we have this term we call the foreseeable future. And unfortunately, neither my vision nor yours extends very far into the foreseeable future. We did a study, uh, that looked at, uh, population projections for the year two thousand twenty-seven, which is eight years from now. How many of you have watched a kid go from one year to eight years? And said, wow, that was a blink of an eye, how did that happen? You know, that, the foreseeable future is not very far. So who knows what's gonna happen twenty years from now, thirty or forty? Population dynamics could turn around and we could wind up with a big growth spurt, then what would we do? We'll be having to go back to somebody and try to buy back this land or try to find some other land someplace when we run out of space? You know, we should think ahead. Even if we can't see beyond the foreseeable future, we know it's there.
I think it's, I, the one thing that I do, um, think that's fair about getting the additional pricing is, is simply that, and I think that the county did this, um, they put the viability of this whole enterprise into question. So it's, you know, we have land that has a stadium on it and then, you know, the, um, they're going to do things to improve the performance of the, you know, the county's investing in improving the, the, um, facilities, but then also the, the, um, experiences or promotion of the renegades as a team. I mean, I think that we, if they do well and we have this other land and they need to expand into it, then we could sell it to them. But if it's something that we don't, you know, that, then, you know, we've, we've sold this land for public use, which would reduce what we could get for it, and then we have this other piece that we could have held on to to see. I'm not interested in owning land long-term, but if currently we, there's only one part of it that's generating any revenue really, and we could sell that, move that off of our books, then this other piece, we could take more of like Craig's attitude. It would be helpful to know if it has any value.
I think that I'm looking at it that, I'm not looking at the stadium and land as an asset just because I know minor league baseball is not stable, they move regularly. And if there's not a deal and we have this, then we're looking at what do we do with this stadium that is, needs upgrades, which would take money away, so I don't look at this as an asset.
I'm not looking at the land with a stadium on it.
That, you know what, let's get rid of it if they're willing to do something. And I think we're making it more difficult to work with to get rid of it because I don't see it as an asset. I think that if we go and do an appraisal and we get a fair market value and we bring that to the voters, that, then they could vote on that piece.
I'm not talking about the north twenty-one, I'm not talking about that, I think the land that the, I think, I personally think we should sell the land that the stadium is on because of the complexity of the arrangement. Under, owning the underlying ground with a stadium we don't own on it always puts it in sort of this very odd place. But I'm saying that looking into the separate parcel that hasn't been rented, that we don't know the value of, that we do have a bus garage over there anyway, that we're not, you know, on the, on the separate, you know, adjacent to this property. We have, we have a purpose to have, you know, a facility there right now. Then we have this other piece that's not generating revenue. Then we have this other piece that's not generating revenue, but we have no idea what the value is. And then we have the land that the stadium is on, that we are making a, you know, I think it would be a wise decision to move that off of our books because it's, it's too complicated an arrangement in terms of owning two public entities, owning, one owning land, one owning the structure is bizarre. And I believe we should find out how much it would cost to relieve ourselves of that. I just think that the entire, it, the entire parcel, giving them also the, the North Twenty-One without really knowing its value and really without thinking into the foreseeable future, since we do have a facility over in that area, would be, would be.
But I look at it that we have a twenty-twenty project that we want to do, that we know that we don't have the funding to do everything that we want to do in it, because it's less amount, right? Jay was saying that the facilities, we were getting less amount of money. That if that money could generate revenue towards that, and I am looking at the foreseeable future because we have land at every school except for one that we can expand upon and we can always go up.
I'm not, I'm just saying that they, just getting the assessment, finding out about those things separately would be.
I think, yeah, let's, let's, let's kind of focus, because we can't really make any decisions about that until we understand the value. So let's, let's tonight just make a decision about how we're going to move forward with the appraisal. So I, I actually think maybe I'll make a motion. I don't, I'll have a quick question before I make a motion. Can we, so it seems like, can we do a joint RFP process with county? We don't know if we can do that.
We could word it that it could be a joint RFP and/or agreed upon party, right? So we could work, work in a motion to do, if the county and the district are able to do a joint RFP and/or agree upon the same, the, the appraisal person. Like, I think we could work it in that it could be either or. Like, a, a agreed upon person or the RFP process first, if that's something we could do. We don't have an answer, we didn't ask.
Right.
That piece.
Well, maybe we don't need a motion right now, maybe we would just need that, that information before, and we can, we can figure this out at the next meeting. But I feel like we've sort of.
And I feel like we did, I must say that at the, at the, the previous meeting, I feel like we did ask about the configuration. I do think that that.
We definitely did, because that's why Dan had to go through so many people to get to someone who could do that kind of appraisal.
Right.
So they, they understand, the county understands that we, we want to look at it that way.
Okay.
You know, I don't think that that's a, a problem.
Right.
So the question is, I, I don't, I definitely, I agree with Anthony in that I don't want to pick from their list. I would like to pick from proposals. So for me, what I'd love is the county to do those proposals and we pick from their proposals, because then that's often. So that's my motion, okay? I don't know if that is possible, so I don't know if I should make a motion about it, but that's what, if, that's what I would like to see done.
You say joint RFPs, that?
No, I'm actually saying county does the RFPs and we look at them and we choose.
And it's a mutually agreed upon.
And the argument is us doing.
I think, I think to agree on, to agree on that kind of motion, we would have to see what is, what is the, what is actually going out to the public for, as an RFP, as a request for proposals. I, I think it's, I think when we agree in concept that an RFP is needed, um, you know, let's just give the county, I don't know, two weeks to come up with something, otherwise we'll come up with something. But, you know, I, I, I think, um, you know, I think we got to go to some steps. I don't want to, I don't want to agree on an RFP that I haven't seen.
The resistance to us doing our own RFP is just more.
Yeah, I mean, it, it.
And there's cost involved.
We're a small district and so, you know, our staff has been working on this rather than, you know, the great plan we just got to here. I mean, it, it really does, you know, there are only so many hands and.
And there'd be legal fees associated with it as well.
There's also subdivision that has to be paid for, that means surveyors and so on.
Well, that would be post the next step, yeah.
So I think, I think just getting back to the RFP, this request for proposal, we put together, you know, you send it out to the three or five, you know, of, of businesses across the country that can do this. And say, we want, we want appraisals of our land, these two parcels, and here's the configurations that we want, and here's the situations we want. What would it cost for you to come and do that? And that's all we're looking for. Then you get the quali, they have to provide their qualifications, right, their experience to say, okay, we can do this. We're going to do it for twenty thousand dollars and here's what we're going to do for you. And then we can review those and select which one we would use. And then say, okay, county, we have, here's what we selected, will you, let's go in, will you pay for half of it and let's go and join them?
So you're saying you, you would prefer if our staff wrote the RFP?
Oh, and where you how long, I mean, you've done these many, many times. I mean, it's, it's, it's not complicated to get a request for proposal, to get proposal, proposals. And when you go to, like, execute on a proposal, well, then you have a contract and all that. So how long would that take?
Well, you need to make sure that it has all the components. So I know that our attorneys were starting to look at the process, we just didn't have them work on it, not knowing what the end result is. But all the scenarios that you want them to work on will have to be pretty spelled out.
And it's us paying attorney fees to do it then and.
And we don't know if the county would agree to pay for the appraisals if it's for subdivided and all that aspect. And just remember, the longer the process takes, right? How long are they going to, the renegades going, are trying to get a deal done at the same time too, so.
How long was, hold on a second.
Yeah, we have, we have fiduciary responsibility to the land that we own. So I mean, we, this, I think this is a step that, you know, that we have to do. I don't see why we, I don't see why we shouldn't do it if we, if it's our land and we have to get the fair market value for it.
And I think we could get that by taking the steps of just coming up with a, a, this, agreeing on appraisal, appraiser.
Well, how long?
How would you, how would you know that, that appraiser is the best appraiser that will get, that will look in the best interest of the school?
Based on references, we can ask for references and have our attorneys vet them?
What about, why, why not ask for the qualifications? I'm not sure what the application is, do a formal process.
I think we can ask for that if that's someone that we're looking to agree upon.
You know, at least, at least it's, at least it applies a standard equally to all the appraisers and then we can evaluate them hopefully equally.
So, so how long would it take to put together RFP and send it out? How long would we give it to respond?
Sure the county legal department could find that out in a day or two.
Well, not, I didn't, I'm not talking about the county, but I'm asking for us to, to do this.
We would work with our attorney to do it a few days.
Usually out a week to ten days before you, you have to give people enough time to do it. You have to mail it out to people, whether or not you want it in the paper as a legal notice.
Right, and that's the response time. So it takes, so first you have to draft it, ready to go out, then you put it out, and then there's a response time.
I'll just go ahead, I feel like if there's any, if we have any question, or if, if the county's not going to split the costs unless we use their appraisers, that definitely makes me not want to use their appraisers.
Right, we don't, we don't know that.
But I don't think they'll want to do the appraisers, the appraisal for all the other aspects. Like, they might say, okay, what, what is it to rent, what is it to sell?
Yeah.
Not to subdivide this and to split this and to do this, because they're looking at one piece, hey, we want, want to either rent it long-term or buy it long-term with the stadium and the land north.
We have a fiduciary responsibility to get the fair market value for that land, whether it's rent or sale, so I don't think we're off the hook.
And we would get the fair market value based on the appraisal.
Well, this is why, like, I think we should consider dividing the land. We're going to have to divide the land anyway.
I, you know what, I think we should really stick to the appraisal question right now, because we, that, I mean, we can, we would make that decision based on the appraisal. And they can do the appraisal without the land actually being, being divided.
But we'll have to decide how it's going to be divided in order to be appraisal.
Well, wouldn't, would it be unreasonable for us to ask the county if they would be willing to do an RFP and let us look at it? And say, you know, we want to do these different configurations, can we do these configurations with the understanding that it's not as though they're paying for the entire appraisal anyway? That we're, we're already splitting the cost with them.
Do we know that county would even want one parcel without the other? Would they even?
They approached, they approached us to purchase the land.
The stadium land and the North Twenty-Three.
The land.
I think they expressed interest in all of it.
In all of it. So if we tell them we want to, you know, we want to divide it up, they might say, well, it's all or nothing. We don't really know until we.
This is so, that, that's the thing, essentially it might.
This is why the appraiser would also get the rental value in case we have to renew the, the lease.
So my point is, we should just make the decision about the appra, how to go about getting the appraisal first before we surmise all the answers to all these other questions.
There's a lot of what ifs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all, all we're trying to get is an answer as to, do we want to be a joint appraisal or not?
Right.
I feel like, I mean, I, what was it, was Anthony's, would be the driver, so we're driving the bus? I, I think it makes sense that if we're, we want to fulfill our best responsibility, that we should try and control the process as much as we can. Because we, the past few months of this, we haven't been, and I, and I feel like we're getting really kind of pulled around a lot. I feel like we're being held hostage to this, like, what if we get stuck with the stadium? There's so many parts that.
It's a big what ifs.
The mites, the what ifs.
That is a big one.
I'd like for us to be a little bit more in, in control of the process.
So what I'm hearing is that, and we'll vote on it, but what I'm hearing is that we would like to do a joint appraisal. However, we need to find out, so we could go back to them, say, we'd like a joint appraisal, but we would like to have A, B, and C included in the appraisal. And then they can come back and say, no, we're only going to do it for A and B and maybe not C. And then we could decide if we want to go off on our own for that appraised piece.
Well, but also the question is, are they going to be doing an RFP for this or are they just using some guy they know? In which case then we want to do RFP for sure.
I think, I think if, I mean, I think the way, the way Anthony is describing it, if the county doesn't want all A, B, and C, I mean, it's going to be weird for them to RFP just A and B and then us to RFP C, I think.
I agree, yeah.
I don't think that would be. In this, just to be clear, A, B, and C is A, buying stadium land, B, the.
I didn't put labels on it, I know there, there were, there are at least three aspects that we're talking about.
So we can pin it down, A is, A is the appraisal of the stadium land, B is appraisal of the twenty-three acres, and C is leasing the stadium land. Those are the three appraisals.
And D would be both of them.
Both.
The sale and rental of both.
Why would they buy and rent?
No, we want a price for the sale and a.
Of every, of the entire thing.
Right, A is price for the stadium land, B is price for the, the North Acres.
Stadium land and north.
Seems like a lot of problems.
These land and north.
I don't know if this.
You're fine with you're not pinning A plus B?
You're not going to do it.
Well, if you're spinning here, if you're, you know, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's the entire parcel.
It's the entire parcel, sale, rental, split parcel, sale, rental.
I, I think we're going to end up owning, owning the, the, the county's not going to agree to all four options. Or three options, however we decide to do it. I just think we should just go put an RFP together and, and ask the county to pay for half of it. We don't want a result from that. But I think we can own it.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to ask the board to approve for us to send our legal back to the county to see it, to say that we're, we want to go forth with a joint appraisal with clarifying questions for what they, what would be appraised. Like, we don't know what they're asking to appraise. They said they want appraised for the sale. We need to see if it's for the rental and if they would subdivide the piece, but.
Can we redraft that in writing so we know we're voting on it?
Sure, let me write it out. It's off the top of my head.
Anthony, would that also include stipulation of our input on the appraiser?
I think, I just want to be able to go back and say, we're interested in going in, going forward with a joint appraisal.
Right.
But this is what we want appraised.
Okay, so not even getting to the point of talking about who the appraiser is.
Not even getting to the point, just saying, we want to do a joint appraisal and this is what we want appraised. And then get an answer from them saying, yay, we'll go forth with that.
Right.
Or nay, we'll go forth with part of it or what, just get an answer from them.
I mean, can we, can we, just for the sake of time, add to this that we want it to be an RFP? We want it to be a.
Right, so we don't have to go back and forth?
So they don't come back and say, yes, and say, okay, now?
I don't know if the county has a lot of time to, to entertain all those decisions.
Yeah, I'm ready to interview them.
I think, I think our decisions are based on, on, on economics and, and human policy. So I think we, I think we still need to go out with, with our, our P anyway. We can just ask the county to pay, pay for it when they're, when we're done.
Well, the RFP doesn't cost anything. It does cost our legal time, but, I mean, we're not paying the vendors to send their proposal.
No. No, I, I mean, I, I, and, and I think that's, I think, you know, I kind of, it's not a way we move away from all of the hypotheticals and start getting some numbers together.
So we put another, another term to say, if we just accept that we're going to do an RFP, we could just say, we want to do an R, we inform the county that we are conducting our own RFP and we're getting appraisals for these four, A, B, C, and D. And we'd like them to keep their commitment to splitting the cost of the appraisal.
We'll move.
Right, which is then our, we're doing, the district is.
Then the district is paying.
We're taking out all the labor work and everything. So that's, that was the discussion, but it seems like. There's some comfort with that, I guess.
I'd like to make a motion to James' proposal.
To what?
We didn't hear any.
I said, I'd like to make a motion to James' proposal.
Can you write it out for me?
That we go out with an RFP for A, B, C, D, and that we will ask the county to pay for half of the appraiser when we review the proposals and make an award.
What's A, B, C, and D?
A would be appraisal of the, the land, the stadium.
Entire parcel, right?
B is the parcel, uh, the appraisal of the, the North Twenty-Three Acres. C is the appraisal of those two combined. Four is the appraisal of the lease appraisal for the land and the stadium.
And the district doing it.
So wait, what I had was the entire parcel for sale and rent, the stadium parcel for sale and rent, and then the twenty-three acres just for sale, because we would never just rent that without the rest of the stadium.
Just to clarify, we don't currently rent the, the twenty-three acres.
We don't, yeah.
So that would be, did I miss hear you? You said we'd be leasing, so the leasing appraisal would be for leasing the stadium land only?
Well, no, I, I put that, actually, I said the entire parcel sale and lease because I think that they had mentioned that they were interested in it, so.
The whole parcel?
In leasing, the whole parcel?
Well, in expanding.
My understanding is they were only interested in buying.
What's, we're investigating everything else, why not investigate?
Right, I mean, entire, entire parcel, sale and lease, stadium parcel, sale and lease, and then the ten, twenty-three acres sale. Because we would never separately just lease that to them. It would, it would be tied to the stadium. Does that cover it?
I guess I want to make sure that if we do lease to them.
And the district is paying for that.
Maintain and control of the twenty-three acres.
So the district would be paying for this and then we just ask them to split half the cost?
Well, we, we ask them to make, to keep their commitment that they already made.
But if they don't, they would, we would be paying for it.
The appraisal?
Yeah. That's, so that's what it's saying, is that we're going to pay for it, but we're going to ask the county to pay half.
Set it up and they can go.
I'm trying to make sure what your question is.
The question was, is with this wording, the district is paying for the appraisal and then asking the county to pay half. And they could say, no, we're not paying half, and then the district is paying for it.
We're not paying for anything, yeah, until we get.
And I want for my motion, my motion was that when the proposals come in, that we evaluate them and we ask the county to pay for half, depending on who we awarded to.
So they'll come in, they'll, the, the proposals would come in, we would evaluate them, we, we would bring the county in then and say, hey, listen, this is, this is who we believe is qualified and here's the cost. Are we agreeable to go forward with this person and you split it? Will they say yes or no? Or me?
And I'd like to go back to my, they've already committed to splitting the appraisal when they gave us their first choices. I think it would be very questionable if they said that we're not splitting.
Definitely want to move forward with our own RFP. I, I would think that they would be fine with it.
So read the motion.
Beacon City School District puts out an RFP for an appraisal that includes the entire parcel, the sale and lease of the entire parcel, stadium, or, um, sale and lease of the stadium parcel alone and the sale of the twenty-three acre parcel.
The first part you said was the sale and lease.
Of the entire.
Sale option, lease option of the entire parcel, which is the stadium and the twenty-two or twenty-three. And then, or.
The sale.
Uh, sale of the, oh.
Say again.
Sale of the entire parcel, lease of the entire parcel, sale of the twenty-three, hello?
Yeah, so it's, it's actually, it's five things, which is what we-
Just for sale of land north.
So how many prices are we getting?
All those, like, they're, she's crafting, and then we'll say it again.
Sale of the north parcel.
Yeah.
I don't understand, I'm sorry, I don't understand what we're doing.
When you say whole parcel, you know, it's only one parcel, the whole thing including your bus garage.
Well, we know that state law exempts us from selling that, Craig, so-
We can say less, less the bus garage.
Uh, here's another question, there is a big parking lot there in the so-called tourism center. What's the legal status of all that property? It's part of the overall parcel, but we don't use it. We haven't really talked about that piece, it's between the bus garage area and the stadium.
That's not part of the twenty-three?
It's not part of the twenty-three, now it's not part of the stadium, the use area, it's not part of the bus garage, it's a chunk in between.
It's a county building, the county leases it.
I think it's a county facility, so-
So they lease it.
We get lease, we get, there's a lease agreement for that, we get payment for that.
Okay, so that's part of an existing lease agreement. So, it would be understood that that goes with the stadium. And they would have to do a subdivision that included that, right?
Is it part of the lease agreement for the stadium? Okay, so, so, okay, and when is that leased up? I don't know. I, I don't understand why we're writing the RFP. Like, I, I feel like that's something we should be seeking legal consent.
We're not writing the RFP.
Oh, well, we're making a motion to literally, like, determine what, we, we generally know that we want these, we want different configurations.
I don't know if we want that, I, I haven't heard the board vote on it.
Okay, so that, that's what I feel like we should, or, so we're voting on-
No, the, James made a motion to-
That, that Beacon would put out an RFP for an appraisal that includes the sale and lease of the entire parcel, the sale and lease of the stadium parcel and the sale of the north parcel.
Yeah, I, I, the reason my answer to that question is, I feel like, uh, in terms of being-
Hold on one second, James, you made the motion, right, let's follow rubber tools.
Wait, did you make the motion or did Ann's make the motion?
I don't, I, I mean, we need a second.
I made the motion.
You said you-
You were mo- you were-
Second James's motion, that's what I understood.
No, I said I made a motion for James's proposal. No, alright, I'll second James, uh, it's not a problem.
Alright, so James made the motion, Anthony seconded, go ahead, it's discussion time.
Oh, uh, just-
Do you get five prices?
Yeah, hold on one second, Anthony, just speaking to Kristen's question of why are we doing an RFP, I feel like it's-
No, no, it's not, I, it's not that, it's not why we're doing that, I totally understand why we're doing the RFP. It's the, why are we determining, like, the parcel, the, the division of this, like, I feel like we're, let the lawyers do that. Yes, I feel like we're writing as something that we should see counsel for.
Yeah, we don't have to get, yeah, like, that's what I don't understand why we're- Well, I mean, Dan was asking for that information, they confused.
I feel like we gave this to him, that's what's a little bit confusing to me, right, am I crazy? We all sat in a meeting, it's just right now, I understand there's no consensus, but what I, but I feel like there is a little bit of groundhog day occurring here where we had a special meeting that we all called ourselves to, and we had almost this identical discussion about what we-
We didn't, and then we stopped it because it was public comment. But we stopped the conversation because it was open to the public and we were seeking legal advice for the process.
But at some point, I would assume that our attorney understood, what, I, I feel like what we're getting back is the one piece of that, which was that here's a guy, right? And so I feel like that's part of what I think is going wrong here, is we are having the same discussion over and over again and, and we don't have a ton of clarity and we're not thinking about this all the time. What we had instructed them to do was to, that these were the different pieces we were interested in. So that's why I'm, what I'm struggling with right now is, I feel like we're writing, we're, we're writing down, I guess now, what we had already talked about, so, and now we're clarifying it and we're gonna vote on-
James made a motion, and this is his motion, Anthony seconded it, and now the board can have discussion about the motion and or vote yay or nay to approve-
Okay.
To go out for an RFP for an appraisal that includes the sale and lease of the entire parcel, the sale and lease of the stadium parcel, and the sale of the north parcel.
No, I, I just wanna be, be clear about that motion is, I'm not suggesting that we're writing the RFP now, we would advise our-
We, we are not writing the RFP, the motion is that the district would write an RFP and then go forth.
Right, this is an instruction for attorneys to-
Okay, and then did we, I had to use the bathroom, I waited as long as I could, so, I, but I couldn't wait anymore. Did we determine that we are not interested in taking this, the county first and seeing if they would want to share? We're, we're taking this all on ourselves.
That's what this motion is.
Okay, and we're taking it all on our staff during budget season, that's what we're doing?
Well, under- understand what taking it all on ourself is, it's, it's developing the request for proposal.
Okay, who, who is doing that? That's you doing that?
Whatever he already said, the attorney. They'll develop that, which is probably gonna be a day or two, and then they're gonna go identify who the, the qualified people have experienced as we saw that this is a non-standard configuration, so who's got, who's got experience about that?
I just wanna ask her for clarification on that, just one second, it's just because I wanna understand each piece of the process. So then how does that happen? Like, you, how does that information get out there, like, we're going to, I mean, how does the request for proposal get out there?
Yes.
So, in some, some cases, you, you mail a request for proposal for people that you know.
Okay.
So it could include the three people that the county had included.
And then the person that, and then the person-
And then the supermater attorney. Right, and then it would usually, in this case, probably go into the newspaper as a legal.
That's what I'm saying, please.
And, and then it would go, then, and that timeframe looks like?
Two, two to three weeks, by the time it's written, it's put out, it's gotta be out in the public notice and legal notice for a while, so I would say about three weeks.
Okay, and so then when, when Anthony, when you're saying, and then we'll review the proposals, who is the we we're talking about?
We can share, I, I mean, unless the, our legal says, we can't share their, the proposals with their legal, I, I don't see why we couldn't share the proposals with them.
It's not, it's not about that, I'm saying that we're reviewing them.
The only, the only concern that I would have is proposals sometimes have confidential business information on them, so they can't be made public. But as long as the county agrees to keep them confidential, cause it's part of an RFP process, I don't see why we can't share the proposals.
Right, what you had said before was, we would review the proposals and we would pick the appraiser. So what I'm just trying to get, because I wanna understand, when I'm voting on this, what I'm putting on our staff and in terms of, like, time and energy and then also what we're putting on our legal team, just so that I can assess, like, this all feels very theoretical, so I wanna understand the nuts and bolts. So when you say, we, were you saying, we field the proposals and then we decide who, who reviews them? Who are you imagining reviews these proposals and picks the appraiser that we wanna work with? And then we bring that to the county and we say, will you accept this? And then, and then they're going to decide whether they're going to share the costs with us at that time? Is that, is that the process we're talking about?
Yeah, the, the we, yeah, I mean, the we could be, I, I didn't specify who the we is, but the we could be the same, similar facilities that is, we could be the, you know, um, the committee of some sort, um, the, the same board, I mean, I, I don't, I understand the, um,
Well, then just wait, then, then we should hear from Amory, then what would that-
But I'm trying to preempt another rush by the county that where we will, we won't have the luxury of time, because they put us against the wall.
The, the difficulty, I mean, the difficulty here really is that we, we're not, we don't have anyone from the county here to answer these questions for us. But I feel like we're doing this preemptive thing that puts a lot on our staff, when we could ask them if they're gonna go through an RFP process and if we could see those proposals.
That's what my original question was, can we just do that?
And I feel that that would be, I, I, I'm getting, sorry, guys, you didn't make, get more here.
I know, I'm sorry, I didn't want to hear about your high school.
I know, much more interesting, um, but I, I really feel like-
Wait, let Meredith talk one second, Anthony.
I, I really feel like, I, I don't love this motion that's on the table, because I feel like we could ask this and we could save ourselves some money and possibly still get what we want.
Transparent, multiple proposals.
I feel like it's also, isn't it also in the best interest of the county to work with us? I mean, they don't wanna look like jerks, they don't wanna look like the county that ripped off the Beacon City School District either, so, I feel like we, it's in all of our best interest if we work together.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with all those comments, but I think past practice has been that the county doesn't give us a lot of time to make these decisions.
But I, I, I think that, I, I feel like that I would, I, I, I think that at this point, I don't think that we're at risk, we, we can express whoever, who would, who would be the person who talks to the county? That would be our attorneys.
Our attorneys.
So I feel like at this point we can say, like, cause we've now talked about this for an hour, or maybe less, I don't know, it feels longer, but I feel like I would like to, I, I also wanna do due diligence and have transparency. I just feel like, almost in the interest of just putting something out there and saying, like, and feeling good about ourselves, that we're not giving an inch, we're putting a lot on staff, and so what I wanna understand is, I share some healthy skepticism about the priority that the county has for, for all of our interests and time, because I lived through the same experience you did, which was, that was not fun in December, but I think we can say, from our attorney's point of view, we can say, hey, that wasn't a great experience, we don't wanna have our backs turned up against the wall, we need to just, we need a transparent process. Um, and these are the things that would increase our comfort level with that process, is that amenable to you? That, this includes, will you go through an RFP process and not just pick a per, and pick a firm that you are feel comfortable with, but rather have something that we can show due diligence was done? Do you, we, we have all of these various configurations, if that is not completely in your interest, will you at least consider sharing the, the cost of the appraisal for what you were interested in, and then we could pay for the portion of the appraisal that we wanted for our own due diligence? I, I feel like we need to take this to them and have some sort of constructive conversation, because otherwise we're deciding to take on a lot of work that we might end costs, because it will still cost. And I understand in the grand scheme of millions of dollars of property and things like that, um, that it shouldn't, that's why I would say we should at least get the appraisal for the additional land separately, so that we are fully understanding what we would be selling and what we would be, you know, what the prices would be, that would be in our interest to get that proposal, but we could share the costs and the legwork with the county to do that.
Kristen, this is what I'm worried about, I'm worried about that it's already end of March, um, I know we're in budgets, uh, but let's say the RFP goes out, we get proposals at the end of April or maybe even beginning of May, we go back to the county, we talk about, you know, whether they're gonna pay for half or not, yada, 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 you know, it's already gonna be July, um, the appraiser needs time to do the work, right? Um, you know, if we delay this more, if we, if we add another month to, to, so let's say July, August, September, right, September, then the, um, the appraiser comes back with, with what the money is, and then we gotta negotiate back, you know, the, the lease is gonna be up in December, um.
I, I don't understand what, I don't understand how this puts any different timeline of things, all we're saying to the county is, it would literally be the identical process of us doing it ourselves, the exact same timeline, it's just our attorney going to them and saying, this is what we need to be comfortable, can you do this process? That is literally the same timeline, I, I don't understand why we're speculating about things.
I, I think maybe we should take it to-
We're speculating because of past practice the county has shown us of how, how, whether, you know, how eager they are to get those.
I think we should vote, yeah. Let's vote, Anthony.
Alright, what's the, is the votes on?
The votes on your motion that Anthony seconded.
Can I, can I, for the sake of, just wanna hear and respond to what Kristen was saying, if, uh, we went to the county and said, will you do this, this RFP, which we just kind of sketched out, uh, will you do an RFP for this, and they say no?
Then obviously we have another-
Would you do, and I don't even think we need to use a request for proposal, would you do an appraisal for these? If we determine that's what we want.
The whole, the whole conversation was about having-
An RFP, a transparent process.
An RFP process.
I think we do, I think we do want that from, you know, we do want that to happen, and I do think that's important. But I think if we can get the county to do it, um, then, you know, that would be easier, less impact.
If the, if the process is public, I, I would be comfortable with that.
So do you wanna withdraw your motion? Cause you can do it.
Here's, here's my, I mean, my concern is that, at the same, the county says, yeah, we'll do it, right? And then they don't, they don't put anything out for three months, and then the, the lease comes up for renewal and we have to rubber stamp it because we don't even have to do crazy as prep to how much it cost to, to, to lease it.
Well, we wouldn't, I don't think we would forget about this, I think that we, we recognize when our lease is up, we can definitely put it on our calendar. And, yeah, I think at this point, Anthony, we're, we're really engaging in hypotheticals, and I feel like we need to vote. We need to say whether we're gonna, this, either James withdraws the motion he put forward, or we vote on it, and then we need to determine what our next steps are.
Alright, I mean, I, I have no problem with drawing it, but I'd like to bring it up at the next meeting then and make a decision based on what the county-
We're making the decision, we're making the decision now.
And if the county doesn't say anything, I think that's, that's enough evidence for us to keep going.
All those in favor?
Nay, 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 nay.
No, all those in favor?
Of what?
Of the motion.
Wait, well, hold on.
Oh, to vote on it.
You're voting on the motion that you put up.
Let's vote on it and then-
We're just gonna vote on the motion that you stated, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those in favor of you-
The motion, all those in favor of the motion on the table, which is Beacon City School District put out an RFP for an appraisal that includes the sale and lease of the entire parcel, the sale and lease of the stadium parcel, and the sale of the north parcel.
Nay, nay, nay.
Hold on, hold on! Just look, you're, if you vote yes, you're in favor of the motion, if you vote nay, you're not. All those in favor?
Aye.
You don't say anything about that. Seriously.
I'm so tired, I'm sorry.
You don't say anything until I ask, all those opposed?
Fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was three, all those opposed, aye.
You say nay, don't say aye when you're opposed.
Opposed, I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
We'll do a roll call, James was a yes?
Yes.
No.
No, Mike?
Yes.
Kristen?
No.
Craig?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Meredith?
No.
Me? No.
What about Anthony?
And Anthony.
Anthony, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, yeses, five nos, motion failed.
Okay.
Next motion.
So I, I would like to make a motion, well, I don't think this is a motion, I just think we need to, we just need to ask our attorneys to please speak with the county attorneys to see if the county is willing to go through an RF, a transparent RFP process with at least three appraisal, appraisers, and let us choose from those RFPs rather than from the list they provided.
And also let us look at the RFP, what they sent us out, right?
Yes, we, we need to pre-approve the RFP, we wanna, we wanna choose from, you know, from it afterward, and that RFP has to include the different configurations that we need.
Can we, is that a motion or is that a-
Hold up, I'm writing it down.
It's not a motion, it's, it's a question for the attorney.
But it's to direct our attorney to-
Yes.
And should we also ask him to ask them?
Just let me finish writing down what she was saying.
So, we, 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 after we approve the RFP.
As district.
Wait, he's just finishing writing it down, Anthony, it's getting a little complicated.
Okay, so this is what I wrote that I think summarizes it. So the motion is to direct our attorney to contact county, to contact the county attorney to conduct an RFP for appraisal as district directs our district attorney to do it. So it's like saying, we could agree upon this, but we want you to contact them and say, this is what we want.
Right, and then, um, in addition to that, what I think would be really helpful is then to have some kind of follow-up prior to the meeting, not voting on, like, I feel like this email that came from our attorneys, I, I think that things need to be spelled out very clearly, like, these are the steps, this is what's happening, this is where we are, I feel like we keep getting thrown into the middle of a conversation and then we have to go through the whole process again and have the conversation for ourselves, it's creating drag. So I feel like, can the attorney just communicate with you and then you can relay it to the board? It's creating drag, so I feel like can the attorney just communicate with you, and then you can relay it to the board if you want, be it email? Just, this is, we've heard back from them, this is what's happening, this will be what's on the next agenda. Because I feel like this, the time in between when we last discussed this and then figuring this out tonight, it sort of, you know, wasn't the front of everyone's mind, and the same themes emerged.
Can we build, I'd like to build two things maybe into that, which would be, one, we put a timeframe on the county, say like, put an RFP to be received within a month, you know?
So that we're in the interest of.
So we can avoid an interest of time. And second would be, maybe we can save some time and build in, like, if they say no, do we then say, okay, we'll do our own RFP, we're committed to an RFP? That way we don't have to wait until they say no, next meeting we come back.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm kind of with that.
If we start an RFP now, it'd probably be sooner than by the time we talk to.
I know, but the whole point of doing this is that we.
It'd be done before this conversation, Mike.
It's not that.
Are we also going to ask them expressly if, under reasonable terms, they're still be willing to share the cost with us?
Yes.
It would be a joint.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, specifically.
That's what it's for, is a joint appraisal.
And I, and I'm actually, you know, if they didn't want to go fifty-fifty because our needs are different, that's, I would be okay with that, as long as we're sharing some of.
Some of the costs and some of the per.
Right, so shouldn't that be part of the question?
Yeah.
Like, if we're asking them to divide this up this way, does this change what they're willing to pay for, how much they're willing to pay?
So I'm just going to keep it simple, because then we can have some type of discussion as to what we feel we want. Like, I know that you outlined it in that, but it's to really direct our attorney to contact the county attorney to conduct an RFP for the appraisal of the, the land.
Right, but we would, we would need them to know, so that they wouldn't say, they wouldn't say yes, and then we have all these conditions.
Right, I think it should be a bit more specific.
As directed from.
We should say, like, these are the things.
As directed from the board.
Yeah, well, these are the different, these are the different things that we're looking at, that would need to be in the RFP.
Yeah, that states.
It's kind of a question of to what degree are they willing to work with us?
Can we, can we draft something that, that we share with the board that before it goes to the lawyer? Just so that tomorrow, so that we, uh, make sure we cover. Because I think actually we should be.
I think it needs to be voted on, though, like, what we're going to go for.
A directive.
The directive as to what we want the appraisal, because it's then going to include the cost. That affects the cost based on what we're appraising.
Because it, but it, but it, we're saying to the county, these are the different, we, we would like an RFP, we would like to work with you on an RFP. We might have, we just have asked, can you communicate to the attorneys, like, that we might not have completely overlapping interests, but we do have some? And that we would like an open process that's transparent, which includes an RFP rather than just picking whoever they've recommended. And, and that's for reasons that have to do with the fact that this is, this is a bizarre arrangement that's created a lot of problems for us. So we would like to put in a process that feels very transparent.
So just so I know what I'd be communicating with them, is I would be communicating that we want to go forth with an RFP.
Right.
And here's what, we, we haven't decided yet, but here's the possibility that we want the RFP to include.
Right.
As to the sale, I'm going to use the, the sale and lease of the entire parcel,
Yeah, with the way that you structured it.
The sale and lease of the stadium, and the parcel, and the, um, and the sale of the north parcel.
Right, and that.
So that's what we're looking for, the appraisal.
To cover.
We may look for it, but we want the RFP to cover this.
Right, and then.
Then we would decide, like, hey, they're only going to cover the.
Yes.
The sale and the lease of the entire parcel.
Right. Right, and then we would decide, then we, we move forward, but then, yes.
They may come back. And then we would decide what we can afford. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Should we put a time, timeframe for them to respond to that?
Before the next board meeting.
They, they would have to let us know before that, and then we have.
That would be, yeah.
You know what I mean, as part of this, that we want the RFP to be conducted.
Well, once we, once we.
We need to know if they want to do it or not.
We got to see if they're going to go forth with the RFP first.
If they do it, and then, then we can agree upon the language. Like, we can, we can vote on the language at the board meeting specifically, we got to have our attorney write the language.
Get to try and condense more into this, but say, can we say, will they agree to it within this timeframe?
Let's not make it more complicated rather than our time with this.
Well, I think what he's, what he's trying to get at, though, is that we don't want this, we would like, we, we are equally, we are mutually interested in this process moving quickly. So we do not, and what we do not want is a repeat of December, where we had one meeting where we could vote on something. We want, you know, like, where we were, a lot was thrown at us, that we, it, we, even though this is a little bit more complicated and more of a process than they might have wanted, this is what we need. And then we also want this to move at a pace, our, you know, that we can get this appraised in order to be well ahead of the, the sale deadline. So we're not forced to vote on things and offers. Do you know what I mean?
No.
Well, the thing, the thing that Anthony.
I'm just looking at the RFPs. We're asking if they're going to do an RFP with what we're stipulating.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor with me directing our attorney to contact their attorney to conduct an RFP as outlined in the, to include the sale and lease of the entire parcel, the sale and lease of the stadium parcel, and the sale of the north parcel? That's what I'm going to be directing them to, to an RFP for, for an appraisal.
I wouldn't say the entire, I wouldn't say the entire parcel, it's just the two parcels.
No, Anthony, we, we actually.
The motion.
We got it, we covered it.
We covered all, a lot of, you know, various things that were, we feel comfortable with.
Is there a second to this? Is there a second to this?
Second.
Comments or questions, Mike?
The question is that, um, I heard what you said, and, and we're directing our attorney to do the RFP. I think we're directing them to go talk to the county.
That's what I said.
The county in, in which.
I, I said that we're directing our district's attorney to contact the county attorney to go forth with an RFP for appraisal, stipulating that it's not just an appraisal for the sale and lease of the land as a whole, but as I stated previously.
Okay. Yes. And the attorneys will give the correct language, it's not all parcels, but it's segments of a parcel.
Correct.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you say aye?
Anthony, did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anne Marie will get just that language.
Thank you.
I tried my best. I think they should be able to.
Oh, for the, for the, for the. For this.
So I took two votes out.
Committee reports, including board comments? Our students rep left, sorry Noah, sorry Annie. Craig?
Yeah, the Public Relations Advocacy Legislative Committee did meet, and we decided to go forward with some form of advocacy relating to the state budget. Subsequently, we reviewed some draft language from the New York State School Boards Association, and in an email to the board earlier today, I summarized some of the key points and boiled it down somewhat. We could bring that up tonight if we have enough eyeballs left to stay awake and do it. I think we should, because April one is very close, and who knows, they might just do it on time. They're trying, there've been threats to stop the clock and all that. So if we're going to do anything, this is really it, and would have to be transmitted to our legislators probably tomorrow, or whatever administration can get around to getting it in the mail. What, what should our pleasure be? Could we put this on the agenda?
Could you read the, the piece now, and then what we'll do is, if you, if the board has time to digest it, then we can add it to the agenda after comments.
Okay, so here would be the draft resolution as it were. Beacon City School District Board of Education asks your continued support for public school districts over the final weeks of the state budget process. We thank you for your support thus far, but the increases do not, in our view, match the rapid growth in student needs, including high-cost special education and programs aimed at equity for the several component groups, for which we are accountable under state and federal rules. We also support a number of items that were included in one or both legislative budget proposals. Rejection of the proposed school-based funding redistribution plan, rejection of the proposed consolidation of reimbursements into a block grant or services aid, rejection of the proposed reduction in building aid reimbursement rates, updating the BOSI's district superintendent's salary cap, increasing the cap on aidable BOSI's career and technical education salaries, establishing a renewed period of building aid and transportation aid forgiveness, authorizing the creation of a teachers' retirement system reserve fund, repealing the building-level budget reports adopted last year as proposed by the Senate, making pre-kindergarten transportation aidable, as proposed by the Assembly, making space for health, mental health, and dental health building aid eligible, as proposed by the Assembly. We also questioned the proposal to make the property tax levy cap permanent, given that there is no immediate need to act on this issue, as the cap does not expire until 2020. We know that the inflation calculation has, in the current year, now exceeded two percent. We call your attention to the first years of the cap, from 2011 to last year, as a time of minimal inflation, making the entire history of the cap an experiment under only the most favorable conditions. Neither you nor we can guarantee a future with inflation under two percent. Mr. Budkowski raised the question, what was the rejection about? That was the governor's original proposals. So when they refer to rejection, it's, they're saying that they agree with the Senate and the Assembly, that the governor's original proposals were not good for us.
Right, yeah, that I was concerned, because it's kind of a double negative. You know, if you're rejecting, rejecting a proposed, something proposed in a proposal, I would, I wouldn't be sure which one we, which way we were advocating for.
It's advocating for what would be financially better for us, is basically it. Yeah, I think anybody that we sent this to an authority would know exactly what it's about, and they would read it in that sense.
Okay, so what we'll do, Craig, is before we adjourn the meeting, we'll add it on, so we don't have to go down far to realign the numbers, and then we'll just, I just don't want me adjourn the meeting now, and we go back.
All right. And that would be it for my comments.
Flora?
My only comment is that the next wellness committee meeting is taking place April third at the Community Learning Beacon High School Board meeting.
James?
Yeah, we had a policy committee, a diversity committee last week. Dear Mary, I wanted to ask, so, so I misunderstood, I saw that some of the policies we looked at, I thought were coming to a first read.
Not on this meeting, because we were doing the second reads on the others, so they're going on to the next meeting.
Okay, great. So, we reviewed a few of the one coming up next month. Policy for homeless children, capital project change orders. We reviewed opioid overdose, but that's not going to a read, and use of time out rooms, physical strains, but we'll be seeing those in the next meeting. I'm sure Anthony will talk about diversity committee, but I just want to say we were really, I felt like, very productive meeting. We were looking at the equity report card, and we had a lot of, just a lot of great input, a lot of people showed up. It was a very productive meeting. I have a personal comments, done.
I just wanted to say that the presentations tonight were really exciting, and I'm very, very happy to see the thinking and the planning that I think our district really deserves. So it's great to see it all coming into focus, so thank you.
Mike?
A few things. First, I really liked the conversation on the land division and the stadium. I, I kind of sat back and watched, and this team is really working pretty well. Able to communicate, especially the new members, speaking up and giving your opinions and listening to each other. There's a lot of, a lot of, you know, talking and listening, it's really a sign of a healthy organization. So I really enjoyed seeing that, and, you know, and hearing and seeing the differences in individuals' views. I've seen it elsewhere, not just in this conversation, but individuals' views, yet we're able to keep the common, you know, the common goal in mind, you know, the support of, of kids and support of the administration and teachers. And that's always good, we got to keep in mind, is that's the common goal, whether we have our own views on anything particular. So I really liked that conversation. I really liked the, the three-year planning. I appreciate your leadership there. You've been, you know, we've all been harping on it for a long time, but really seeing it up on the screen was impressive, especially with the new courses, the excitement that you're getting. You're, you're clearly talking with kids and talking in the building, so that's really a good thing to see put into action. I, I have to make a comment, the track and field teams, which maybe Noah would. The track and field teams, there was actually, in the Highlands Current, they had, they listed the records of both Beacon and Haldane, so hopefully that some records are broken. And, and, and I have to say that on the girl's side, my daughter still holds the 2010 record for Steeplechase, so hopefully, hopefully somebody will take that on and, and break her record. We talked about the 2022 capital plan, all that. So, one big question is, when are we going to start construction on the turf field?
So, the plan, although not definite, would be the end of April. They did look outside, the ground is extremely wet, so we have to wait a little while. But I'd have a more definitive answer for you probably at the next board meeting, when we get a little bit closer.
Okay, so we wanted to start right at April first, but we always said it was going to be contingent on the, the ground, and it's, yeah, it's been fairly messy.
It's very wet.
So, we don't want to get in there and start and then have to stop, and then, and that would cause delays, so thank you for that. And the next facilities and operations committee meeting is April seventeenth.
Ten.
Seven, seven?
We moved it to the ten.
We moved it to the, okay.
Seventeenth is spring break.
Thank you. April tenth at seven PM, district office. That's all.
Anthony?
Good evening, thanks for allowing the video conference in. We had a diversity committee meeting on, um, sorry, it seems so long ago. The twenty-first of March, and we talked a lot about the equity report card, the, at least the draft. It's still a work in progress, there's some areas that are still in the construction. And then from equity report card floor, the conversations of the restorative practices, the equity teams, the dignity framework, and the cohorts that were explained today to the board. So, you know, we appreciate the efforts of the school district in inching forward in those areas. We also talked about setting expectations of the public, so that we would, so, you know, the public knows, A, that we're working on it, but B, you know, some, some aspirational, um, goal with some sort of a, a time, so that, you know, we can, we can actually see progress. Obviously, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's hard to put a, put a time, a schedule together when we are, you know, working with different moving parts, but, but the, the public does want to set their expectations. And we should take the lead on that before they set it for us. The next diversity committee meeting, I sent a Google poll out to Flora, Alyssa, Anthony, and James to do, try to do a combined policy and diversity in one night. So if you don't get the Google poll, please let me know, and I'll try again. The last thing I want to mention is, you know, I do appreciate the, the student that came up and talked about the, the medical field. You know, it's, it's one, it's one of those professions that I feel that's good job security. And I, I, I will mention that one of the, one of the, the high school experiences that you can take advantage of, if, if the school district is willing, is the certified emergency medical technician. The effective January ninth of 2019, the aid to take the tech load from eighteen to seventeen, you can start the class before that, as long as, as long as by the test ti, by the test time that you're seventeen. I think that fits in very well with an elective, if, if we can win it. And I will say from experience, we've had, we've had students who've been interested in this field, emergency medicine. It gives them an exposure to anatomy and patient care. And not all, not all students go to, um, to other medical professions. Some of them become nurses, some of them become PAs, a couple of them become doctors, but some of them become police officers and firemen. So, you know, I think, um, I think that would be a, a, a good endeavor, would actually also prepare the students for the future. That's all of my comments, thank you very much.
I was unable to attend the technology committee meeting. It was right after school, it's during work hours, so I regret that I was unable to do that. Perhaps we will. Perhaps we will, when we get an update from Mr. Keely, we will hear more about what took place there. I, the next sustainability committee meeting is April 9th. And I also appreciate all the presentations that happened tonight. It's very exciting to see and I'd like to just pick up everyone else's sentiment. And then I don't have the specific language in front of me. I wish I, Meredith taught me how to do a screenshot twice and I still haven't mastered it. But I wanted to acknowledge Beacon alum, Mike Radkowski's daughter, who received an award from the Coast Guard for her, basically bravery and, and her ability. She witnessed an accident on her way back to the academy, I think, on I-95, and acted very swiftly, putting herself at some risk. And this was back in December.
Yep.
And she was able to get assistance, secure the scene, and use her emergency medical training to help a person who was injured in that accident and pinned under their airbag and directed the scene to help extract people, extract the driver while supporting his cervical spine and probably ensuring limited damage. And it was very impressive to read about, and I wish I had all the details. But as somebody who, you know, gives a lot of time to us and then also realized that, you know, his, his, our alum, you know, went on to do this wonderful thing, I thought we should recognize it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's impressive, yeah.
Oh, so we didn't have the curriculum committee meeting. I'm not sure when the next one is, but coming soon. And I did actually, I was trying to remember Eric. We did add a class last year that was sort of like, it wasn't a medical technician class, but it was, it was like a lab and medical skills class.
Laboratory skills.
Laboratory skills, thank you, Cecilia. So that might be interesting to that student if she doesn't already know about it. The next Duchess County School Board meeting is April 4th. We're going to be talking about how to pass our budgets, just different techniques that different districts are using. And the last thing I wanted to mention, also I wanted to say that the presentations were awesome. The lighting in the video was impressive. Didn't want that to go unnoticed. And, and I want, I sent an email to the board about this. I really would like to, and I'm not sure exactly the process, but visit a new policy, a student cellphone policy. And I, you know, I've been dealing with this with my own children. And through dealing with it, I realized that there, we don't really have a policy. Every teacher has their own policy. And what I don't want to do is create a top-down policy so that teachers feel that it's one more thing for them to manage. But I do think it could be a very interesting conversation with teachers and staff about what they're doing, what's working, what's not, what they would like to have in terms of support. There was an interesting article in the NISBA newsletter about March 1st being National Unplugged Day, which I didn't know about, but it's on my calendar for next year. My paper calendar, so I won't miss it. But it was really interesting because they talked about how students did embrace it, how it was louder in the hallways because kids didn't have headphones in their ears. And you just, you start to realize there's a big impact. And I think we need to, as part of being a digital citizen, as part of our strategic plan, I think we need to start to begin to address that. So I don't exactly know what that process would look like, but I think it's really important.
James, would you be able to put that on a future policy agenda for discussion to see if we wanted to tackle it as, as the policy committee and/or look to see if we wanted to pull some district people in for that conversation?
Yeah, absolutely. And Mary, listen, do you have some ideas, maybe some resources, articles maybe that you?
I sent some, I sent in three sample policies. I mean, it really runs the gamut, like New York City apparently is a very strict policy where you just don't have your phones out between, you know, when school is in session. There are others where it really kind of limits the, each teacher to have their own policy. I think that we should do something, I mean, my choice would be a more severe thing, but I think probably what it would be better would be something in between. But I just think that I would like to, for teachers to feel supported so that if they want to do something where there are, you know, real limits on phones, and so they're not policing, whether or not kids are looking at their phones under their desks, that they have the support of the board to do that.
Okay, did you, did you email those to me already?
I emailed, I emailed the entire board, I thought.
Maybe I just missed that one.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
I have no comments. So I need a motion to adopt Resolution 032519A for submission of a proposition on the purchase of school bus for the annual budget vote.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Meredith already said second, Craig, wait, all right, this is a roll call, vote.
But I have one, I have one question, didn't we, I thought we had already?
This is the second part of it, so when we went through with the bond attorney. So this is, it's no difference, it's just the matter of the terminology that we have to actually approve this as well.
Just wanted to make sure.
We checked with our bond council, so that's why you're seeing it twice. Yeah, okay, well, Ms. Betterbin?
Yes.
Mr. Case Liao?
It's the, it's a resolution for the buses to go in that.
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Radkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Stadler?
Yes.
Mr. Zhang?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Hewer?
Yes.
Mr. White?
All right, we have a second. Resolution, Resolution 032519B to adopt a bond resolution for the Bosse's capital project.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is this something that's going to the voters or is it something that we're deciding ourselves? I thought bond act had to go to the voters.
So this is in relation to the Bosse's vote that the voters did vote for. This is, gives us the ability to bond our share. Our share over two-year period is $2.1 million. And to be honest with you, I don't have $2.1 million in unappropriated fund balance just to pay it. So I want to be able to give us the option, we need to pass a bond resolution in order for the board to bond for that.
But, but, but does this bond, my question is though, usually bonds go to the voters. And I know the Bosse's project went to the voters to, for the capital plan, which, but, in terms of financing the plan, don't we have to go back out again to the, to the voters?
We do not have to do that, no. We, we should, we include our share of the bond in our general fund budget, which will go to the voters in May. But we will not be allowed to float a bond to pay for this unless we do a bond resolution that the board approves. And then it goes through all the legal notices after it's approved by the board.
Okay.
You said, you said it was going to be in the, in the May budget?
It's included in our budget.
The budget, the, the, the bond payment is included in our budget.
Oh, okay.
Do we need to necessarily vote a bond for the entire amount or it says up to or not exceeding 2.6?
That's our share.
So would we likely to bond the entire amount or partial?
My, I would say my recommendation right now is that we're going to bond the whole thing. Unless we get a windfall and then we don't have to.
All right, this is a roll call.
Okay, one more time, Ms. Betterbin?
Yes.
Mr. Case Liao?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Radkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Stadler?
Yes.
Mr. Zhang?
Wolf.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Hewer?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
All right, we're on the consent agenda, the consent agenda permits the Board of Education make more effective use of its time by adopting single motions, cover those relatively routine matters which are included in any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually. A particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that any will be considered and voted on separately. Thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything on the consent agenda a board member would like to pull? Any other items? Hearing no other items, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items minus 13.12.
So moved.
Second.
James, that was you?
Here's a second.
So, yeah. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0 with thanks.
Craig has a thing to add too, so.
With thanks for 13.08. I need a motion for 13.12.
Uh, motion.
Second.
Second.
Who was that? It was Mike, it was Anthony, right?
I had Anthony and Kristen. Comments or questions?
My question is, this is, this, uh, the contract for the AAR for auctions?
Yes.
And the, it does, on the bottom it says the name is Anthony White, but shouldn't it be Anthony Tomato on there? Because it's, right, the seller? You just value Beacon School, is it Anthony White? The email address is Tomato. So I was just wondering why Anthony White's name is on there.
Usually we put Anthony White as the board president on behalf of the board, but that would be the only reason, I mean, I could make them equal each other.
I just was wondering why that, because I've seen your name on other thing, Anthony White's name.
I think the question, the part is, is because they would be contacting Anthony Tomato as the primary person. They wouldn't contact me individually, so he would be the contact, but for the approval piece, it would be me. On behalf of the board.
All right, I'm fine with that. And then can this be used for, it looks like reading it, could we can use it for anything that we want to sell? That we surplus to or, right?
Right, this, this is, this is mainly right now for that very large equipment that we had accessed at a previous meeting. So it's machinery that, it's difficult for us to get anywhere, so they can come and pick it up. And there's really no cost to the district, so we thought it was a good way of accessing it.
Is it possible, I know we usually surplus some buses and equipment like that, can we look at the, if this could be used for that as well?
We can, I don't know if there's a market for buses, but I can talk to Ron about that.
Just to see if, well, he, he surpluses it somewhere, but I just want to make sure we're getting the best money for our, for our buses. And if this is an opportunity to get another price. So we'll take a look at that. That's all I have.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Wolf, opposed? Motion carried 9-0. One second, Craig, I didn't forget about you.
You have a number for it?
So you want to do a motion to add an item to the agenda and it would be Resolution 032519C.
0325, how was it? 19C, okay. So I'd like to move that we add an item to the agenda, which would be number 032519C.
Zeus, there's a second, okay. My pen broke twice now. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? For adding? Opposed? Nothing, okay, so now we need to vote on the resolution, so.
So the resolution would be as previously read and to be sent to our state legislators and the governor, advocating their position.
Make a motion to adopt this rule.
Is it, so Craig, did you make the motion or Anthony did?
He did, I'll second it.
Comments or questions?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure about all of these items. For example, what is, what is the item about updating Bosse's district superintendent salary cap?
I'll explain that. The, there's a quirk in state law that limits how much a Bosse's district superintendent can be paid, can't be paid more than the commissioner of education or something linked to that. So that's kind of arbitrary and some, some districts in the state have a hard time finding superintendents because of this sort of cap. I'm not sure how much it affects us, we seem to have done okay for the moment.
Is the Bosse's district superintendent, is it a, is it a state job?
Well, we, our Duchess County Bosse's has a district superintendent who runs the Bosse's.
They work for the component districts, but they also have their own center-based programs and/or satellite programs that they're in charge of. So for instance, they're really the liaison purpose from the commissioner and the board of regents that communicate state initiatives and so forth down to the component districts. So Duchess County has 13 component districts. So he communicates and he has superintendent meetings, but they also have like PPS meetings, high school principal meetings, and they push all that information out. But they also run programs that we send our kids to, whether it be CTEC, specialized programs or so forth.
Who does he work for?
His board.
His board? There's a board of ed, a cooperative board of ed.
Cooperative board, he works for the cooperative board, that's.
The Bosse's board of ed.
So he's not a state employee? Is he a state employee?
What do you mean, he gets retired? They're saying that it's like the, the salary is, I think he's trying to ask why it would be tied to the commissioner of education.
Well, there are some cases where people in a chain of command are, don't, can't make more than the governor, for example, right? So I'm just concerned, wondering whether or not this is one of those cases where, I mean, should they or tend to be allowed to make more than the commissioner of education? So that's what, that's what I don't know.
Cecilia's indicating that she has information.
Mr. Radkowski, to answer or to add a little bit more information for you. It's been longstanding, the district superintendents, which are the Bosse's superintendents in the state, were given the authority that they're an arm or an extension at a local level of the commissioner's office. So that's why there is some level of a state law that caps the district superintendent salaries to be in line with where the commissioner's salary is. So I don't know what the current, the current rate is, it used to be like $160,000 like five, five years ago. And that was a limiting factor in some portions of the state, which is what's always been a concern. But they are, they, the district superintendents do have liaison responsibilities of the commissioner's office to the local component districts.
And the, the, we all pay a piece of the Bosse's district superintendent's salary, right? So do we, do we know what is the cap is? I know you were sure, you said 168.
I think it's 165.
Because that's the commissioner of education's salary.
I don't know about that part, I just know the DSs, I think are capped at 165.
Okay. The other, 166, 752? 166, 752? The, the last one, it's an interesting, making space for health, mental health and dental health building aid eligible. So to be of opportunity for both, for dental health programs? Is that for, is that associated with the district?
I haven't been able to research that one. Sorry, I really don't know the details behind it.
Well, I, I think this is.
NISBA recommends it, so if somebody knows more about it than me.
There are some facilities, residential facilities and so forth that get state funding and so forth, that they have dental programs. It's not really pertaining to public schools such as us, per se. But there are some programs that are private schools that get funding, state funding pieces.
I thought I read in this, in the onboard thing too, there were some public schools, probably more in New York City, that had planning, community schools, yeah.
And it could be for the community schools in that aspect.
It's basically creating more of a, yeah, community school model. For most of the communities in New.
My last question, regarding the tax cap. You know, why making it permanent, why act on it now because it doesn't expire yet?
NISBA made the point, I think it's, this is sort of like a football strategy, let's punt, you know, this into the next year. The governor often tries to do the same thing where he's been advocating to make the tax cap permanent as is. Doing that would pretty much eliminate a debate that could occur over whether we should alter it. And they have a number of ideas and ways to alter it. Some people would like it to be abolished. So it's not like everybody is in love with the tax cap the way it is. So they said, look, why not, let's have some more discussion about this and not. about this and not debate it, not just, you know, prematurely nail it down now, what's the hurry, that's their basic take.
Thanks, I appreciate your knowledge of this and advocating this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried 9-0. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm ready.
9-0. 10:58.